Thank you, ladies and gentle persons, and thank you Doug for being patient with us. We are talking too much, too verbose, too much into the info, and we are off schedule. So we apologize and hope it's not interfering with the rest of your day.
That's not a problem. It's good to be here, it's good to see you all again. What we've done is prepared a document through your efforts, through your work, to put together a board self-evaluation, a tool that's very widely used. It's one of the things that are in many districts' board policy, is to do an annual board self-evaluation. So what I've done is I've given everybody a copy of exactly the same thing. It's purely anonymous, I have no idea who said what. The only way you'll know who said it is when you recognize your ideas. So the good thing is, is it gave us a lot of information that I think is of value. I really don't work with individual board members, I work with whole boards. So I'm going to direct my insights around the whole board, but there are some things that you might want to look through as you go. If you turn to the insight page, it has all of the answers of the questions, and it has what you, basically you've broken it down into two areas. What are we currently doing from your perspective, and how important is it? So those are the answers that everybody gave and recorded. It's broken down into averages, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then up on the screen, I'll walk you through the insights that we can garner from the data. So, a couple key insights. It's all qualitative data. It's an opinion, okay? We wanted your perceptions. Now, we then take that data and quantify it by giving it a number. So you rate it at 1 through 4. 4 is the highest score, and 1 would be the lower score.
Okay, so that's easy.
I hope that makes sense. So we're asking for your thoughts. In an ideal world, we would be currently working at a 4 in everything, as far as what we're currently doing, and our perception of the importance would also be a 4, because those questions are all directed to the work of a board, not your board, all boards. So in an ideal world, we would be at a 4, but that doesn't mean we're going to, because it, remember, it's a perception. So what may be important to a board in southwest Kansas might look different to what's important to a board in northeast Kansas, because that's the way perception works, or opinion. So that's a couple things to keep in mind. I want to mention averages versus outliers. We record the data to you as averages. And if you look through it individually, you'll notice there are some scores that are really high, and some scores that are really low. And what we would call that is an outlier, okay? Because an outlier affects the average. If everyone thinks we're at a 4, and one person says we're at a 1, that lowers the average, even though it's, that doesn't mean the whole board felt that way. But the key to looking at outliers is they may be giving you an insight, okay? On a given issue, someone may think, the board thinks we're doing this, and someone says, "But we're not communicating as well as we thought," or "We're not as engaged with each other as we thought." And what that tells you is somewhere along the line, an individual thought, "This isn't where we should be. We aren't currently where we need." So it doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, it means, how do we address it? How do we look at it? Because someone's opinion is, and so you can use it in that manner. And then the power of it is truly the gap analysis. We said, "This is really important, but we're currently not doing it." So we'll talk about that as we go through, and I'll literally just walk you through the charts in your book. The handout breaks it down for you in multiple graphs, which are the individuals. But that's not for us, for me to do on the screen, because I want you to focus on what the board says. The red, the blue line in each of the graph represents our thoughts on the current practice. And the red line represents our thoughts on the importance of each of those activities. So here's what it looks like when we work through that. There were six core areas: board relations, how well we work together, our board meetings, how well we run our board meetings. Then we had vision and planning, as we think of the district. Board policy, how are we doing when we work on policy? How are we doing related to budget and finance? And then, of course, the last area is the board superintendent relationships. How are we working as our team? And as you know, at KASB, we teach, we work for boards, but we know that the board and superintendent are partners in district success. We just know that, and it's been proven. That's what the research tells us, we have to work together. So I'll give you the brief numerical, and then I'll walk back to the graph. If you look at this, you'll see that we scored pretty well. When I got the data and started looking into it, we were working pretty well as a board, okay? So right at the top, it said, "The board members, how we work together." The lowest score that we had was in our, "How well we work together." And it was important, but you notice that was also the lowest score in your perception of the importance of it. And to me, that, the insight is this: there's a realization that we don't have to be best friends to be an effective board, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay? But we have a task to do, to serve the district, to serve the kids in our communities, and so even if we don't all see eye to eye on everything, we have to find a way to work together. I thought that really came out of the report. So there's no, there's no, there's just no insight to make people work together, other than the common goal of the system, of the district. So I think you did pretty well as we go through the rest of this, and we look at it. If there's an area then for you to, if there was one area I would say to focus on as a board, would be that internal culture of working together. That would be my insight, from the data, okay? So here's what it looks like in the graph form. There's a little bit of gap on all of them between what we're currently doing and where we want to be, but it's not a very big gap. As a matter of fact, it's a very doable, it's like getting, it's like the goal is to get an A, and we're getting Bs and B pluses, okay? And I know that may, it may not mean anything to you guys, but I've worked with boards who are supposed to be getting As, and they're getting D minuses. So you're doing pretty well, in that sense. So a lot of good information for us to walk through. So here's that very first one, when it talks about, this was our lowest area, how our board member actions work as we work together through the process. And you can see each of those ideas creates, and it's a little far from my vision here, I'll have to pull my paper up. Each of those areas asks a question, okay? Are the, are the, do we have the best interest of the entire district in mind when we get together? Was a question. There's a gap there, okay? I'm, uh...
You need to number your pages. We love you, but we're all...
I did number my pages, but I don't think you could see I lost. It's a little bigger, and I feel bad about it.
So would that be page 5?
We would be on page 5, yes. Couple of insights to follow that then, is it looks like there's a consensus that we need to, we need to make sure when we, when we get together that we're making the decisions that we all feel comfortable, comfortable with. Community values and aspirations, how are we doing on that one? We're getting closer on that score. We think independently, speak with one voice, and there's a little bit of a gap there. You can see that's a lower, but you notice also, there's a little bit of a gap on what you determined was, how important that was. Confidentiality, being able to keep the important things that we talk about in confidence, when they should be held in confidence. And then, the confidence in the board and the district. So those were some insights, those are some areas that related to how well we work together that can be measured for areas of improvement. And if you look right above it, you can see where some of the scores were, how important it was, and then where the gaps were. We rated it as a 2 sometimes, so there's some areas we need to, need to focus on. One comment at the end of that section. "We have not bonded as a board to present ourselves as a unified body." I thought this was very well written. "We need to learn to let go of anger and recognize that we have to adapt to change, constant change. People have different personalities and should be respectful to move in a positive direction. It's important to agree, to disagree, and move to create success for all students." I thought that was very well written. That should be a motto with every board. We have to learn to, it's okay to disagree. You're supposed to bring a different mindset. We have to learn to do it agreeably, so that when we're done, it's not personal, okay?
Do you have those comments on, in this document as well?
Yeah, it's on that.
Very bottom, yeah. Very bottom, okay. Off that page 5. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move you to the next one. This is the importance of our meetings and the meetings of the board, how well we're doing. I thought you scored very well here. When we get together, the work we do, we do it well, as it relates to serving the district.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So on these, when it says the importance of it, you were saying all of these should be 4, for us to consider as important?
Well, basically, the nature of the questions are, it's set up so that they're all important. So, but we still want your opinion on how important you think they are. So there's no right or wrong answer, but in an ideal world, these 31 questions, every one of them are important.
So how can we move as a body, who, when I'm looking at this, some people feel like it's only a 2 level of importance, some people say 3. How do we move from feeling that these things are not important for us, instance, for us working together? If it's not a high level of importance, and like you said, "Oh, we can have different ideas, but work together," how do we as a board, or you're going to talk about this later, I don't want to jump ahead, how can we understand more to move together toward the 4, and have the mindset that we need to be a 4, rather than when we do this next year, it's still the same, nope, we should still be a 2? We should still, how do we?
You asked the perfect question, but there is no perfect answer. Who decides what's important to the board? You guys do, okay? These are, these were 31 questions, aligning to these six topics, okay? And all of them are important, but you get to determine how important it is to you. So no one can come in and say, "This should, you have to do this, you have to do that." Who gets to decide? You do as a board. So you may never get that. Or you can say as a board, "Oh, these things, these things, these six items, how well we work together, what we work on, okay? Our vision and planning, you know, our policy, this is all important, and it's going to be important, but you'll have to decide it. And you'll have to do it as you work together through this." One of the most, you're, the perfect question. One of the most challenging roles of a board is policy. It is challenging. It's, you've got to combine the law, you've got to combine the needs of your community, you've got to decide. So that's a challenge. So how do we, how do we move that? Because sometimes, I know your attorney's not here, sometimes policy's not very exciting, until it is. You know what I mean?
You know, I just felt we'd never had the time to talk about it. You know, we came in, it was a quick training, quick this, quick that, and then bam, now you've got to find a superintendent, deal with the contract, and it's never, we've never had the time to really, yeah, to talk about it. And then that means we all have our different, I believe that we truly do want what's best for the kids. Now, the problem is, what road are we going to take to get there? And then it's old school, new school, all that stuff. But I just felt like we never had the time to really sit down and meet.
But you know what? You're exactly right. When the legislature changed how board members stand on, they put us at a disadvantage. Because when we came on and was elected, and we started, we had that summer to train and go through all that stuff to understand what was coming up. Now, you take the board, you get elected in November, and you jump on the board, so you've got to go back, you've already got a budget in place, you've already got all this stuff in place, and you've got to go back and just jump in and retrain.
But even if you're just elected, you still, we don't have time to talk about issues. It's always, you know, you can have all the training, but we've never collectively, to me, had an opportunity to sit down and talk. I know you have to have losses, it has to be public, blah, 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 but we've never had that time. It's not so much the training, I get what you're saying on that, but we still haven't had the time. This is important, just this time, do this is good. You need a little bit more time like this to talk about things.
But that's one of the things I'm talking about.
No, but you said the training. That's why I said...
Not only the training, but the board retreats and stuff came before we had to jump into it, when schools started to do all that. Now, when you come on, when they come on, and you all come on in January, it was starting all this, so you're trying to cram all this stuff together, and it just don't work good about it.
Yeah, but you, but I said, I heard you on that, but I still think you even need some more time to do some other things as well. I hear what you're saying, but I still think we need additional time to do some stuff, because we're hitting it, but, and thank God it's not as bad as it is, but we're also dealing with cultural things and all kind of stuff, try to work this out.
And in addition to what you said, also, we were also, we also addressed, our first board meeting, the superintendent resigned. That created a whole bunch of new kinds of things that we had to address that we weren't normally, I don't think that's really the way things normally go. We were kind of saddled with something that was very unusual, and something that we really had to address at that time. Okay, let me interject, because you, this is perfect. You asked the perfect question. You gave the perfect answer. And you need to know, you just identified, how do we build that good board team? We spend time together. We get to know each other. We get to know what we, where we're thinking, where we're coming from. So that when you're making decisions, I, you know, you don't agree with me on that, but I know why, okay? I understand why. You have a different, Brenda's identified, that will start to take care of itself, but you're, it was all new the first time, okay? You were, you're thrown into the, it used to be that you start fiscal year, and you inherited all that. You started, you put your board plan together, your calendar, all that, you inherited that. You didn't, you didn't put it together, you inherited. You inherited superintendent, and this is what it looks like in every district, that part of that timing changed everything. But you just identified the key, how do we find time to spend working on becoming a team, working on becoming a board, without having to make decisions? Because when, every time you get together, you're having to make hard decisions, you don't get bonded very well. That's a good insight, yeah. So the purpose, I get, her question, but she got the best answer. Okay? That's right. How are we going to find time, so we know where we're coming from? So we know what our paths are. Seven people from all over the district can put their heads together without having a chance to put our heads together. The interesting thing is, you've identified a couple things that are important. There's certain things we have to do to follow the law, we can't get together and just visit. But we get together and plan, we get together and talk about ideas, and that, because it's public, that's public, because we're a department serving the district. And one of the best, I see, I saw lunch coming, one of the best ways to get to know each other is breaking bread and sitting at a table and talking. So, good insights. I don't know if you had intended to give the perfect answer, but you did. That's how we become a team, okay? Can't just, and every team changes with even just one person. One new member, so you have multiple new members. So you have a whole new set of people to get together with.
That expression, "Just do it." The expression that says, "Just do it."
Yeah, yeah. And unfortunately, the problem with just doing is we have to know what we want to do and how we're going to do it, and how we're going to do it together. Good, good, good insights. All right. What you've done when you get together as a board, and you've done that very well, you can see how high your scores are, your current meetings, your current open meetings act, you follow that, obviously, we're doing that very well. Your agenda, you put a good agenda together. Your agenda and superintendent recommendations, and of course, the superintendent's job is to make those recommendations, but not to decide, that's president. Your prep for meetings, there's a little bit of a gap there, that would, that would indicate that maybe when we get to the table, we're not as prepared as we would like to be. We know it's important, but we haven't spent enough time away from the table planning. You accommodate the board staff in public, what a great place to be. And then how to place an item on the agenda, which happens when you're a new board member sometimes. How do we talk about this important, how do I get it on there? And so, my idea would, well, what is the procedure that we normally, we normally talk to the president? And she, or we talk to the superintendent, and they put their heads together, that's how you normally do that.
And then, any, at the beginning of any meeting, it's an open exhibit.
Okay, you didn't have it at the beginning, all right. Everybody knows that, everybody's comfortable with that, okay? And then, of course, the last one, a deliberate decision-making process, again, good scores. We talk about what we want to do, we have a good discussion, I hope we can share ideas, and back and forth, and then we talk about it, and then we make a good decision based upon our discussions. That's what your score would indicate. Good. I'm going to move ahead. How are we doing related to vision and planning? Another excellent score, it's bottom of the next page. You've done well on this area. Again, you're working in that BB plus area on this, related to them. This vision and planning is critical, and you've identified that you're doing that fairly well, as you work through that. Questions on that one? As you go?
Well, look at the, if I'm on page 7, you said, "The current." Now, there's 3 to 4, 2 to, you know, there's, there's some gaps, some, what's, on page 7?
For vision and planning.
Distribution of vision and planning.
You have one comment at the bottom of that one. And when I, when I looked through that, I was, I was curious if everybody was aware of the long-term vision and plan, is that, do we all know what we're working on? Are we comfortable with that? And then your one comment, trusting those who are in various positions for the district to reach the goals. An adequate resources has to be at the forefront of every school board member. Active communication and active engagement is necessary to achieve student success. We are in agreement on the goals, but differ on how to reach them. Again, I don't have any idea who made that comment, but it's extremely well-written. That is exactly what we're, what boards do, okay? We all want the same thing, but we haven't come to a consensus of how we're going to accomplish it yet. So a good picture, I have no idea who shared that insight.
They may have framed the graph, and the jagged lines.
So I thought that was, your vision and planning is pretty, is pretty well in line, yes?
The one piece that I think we still can improve on is that agreed-upon vision. We have the vision for the district, we have our mission, we have our goals, but when that question asks, "What is our vision for the board?", I'm like, we, we really need to know what our vision is. Like, we should all be able to say, "Oh, our vision is blah, 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 blah." And I'm not sure if we've established that firmly as a board, to clearly, what's our vision? Our vision statement is this for the board. So I think that's why the scores may vary, I'm not sure, but it just appears that everybody, it seemed like everybody, except for one person, may have ranked that as agreed-upon, but when you look at the importance, everybody put it as a 3 or higher, higher ranked, because all the other areas, you know, are a little more consistent, just like the plan for moving forward. We're no, you know, we kind of know where we need to be moving forward, but that agreed-upon vision.
And you've identified two important areas. The first is, the district, who determines the district goals? The board. Who helps us do that? Well, we have the admin team, we have the teaching staff, we have our faculty, we have, we have our classified staff, we have our community input, those are all the things that help you determine the district. Most districts don't have a separate set of goals for their board, and a separate set of goals for the district. They should spend all their time on one set of goals, working to make the district better. I will tell you, on occasion, boards will have our goals, but those are more goals about how we're going to work together, how we're going to treat each other, more of a code of conduct as we work. So those are, that's, it's not really board goals, but it's how we're supposed to work together, but your time should be spent on our district goals, and that should be what drives the board. So on occasion, and I've done throughout the state over the years, "Well, can you help us put together some board goals?" Well, your board goals should be the district goals. They're all one in the set, that you should spend your time on. So that's a great question.
And where I think where I was coming from, because as we have to give an evaluation to Dr. Faust, we have to be on the same page for, what are we evaluating, you know, what are we having, what is, what are we hearing? What are his goals? If we all have different things, it's hard to piece together. Well, what are we evaluating him on? How does it tie back to our original goal? How does this lead to where we have originally agreed? And we have to be together to some point in order to give a direction to Dr. Faust.
Again, you've identified the key area, "We."
Right.
"We." What is it that "we" wants him to focus on? Not is it what we want seven individual board members want him to focus on, it's what we as a board. And so what, because of timing, because of, when you put your, which, by the way, when you put this together, you did that, it was very well-done. But when you bring in new team members, they may look at that and say, "But I'd like to tweak this and this, we should change that." Have you done that? That would be a question. Have you done that? If you've done that, now that means, this is us, this is what we agree upon, as a board. So that's what his charge is to accomplish, okay? And then you measure him on how well he's accomplishing your goals, not just your goals though, okay? You said "we," our goals.
Right.
And then, then you can have a truly objective evaluation that measures what he's doing, and say, "You're doing A, B, and C really well. We're struggling down here on B, so we need you to really focus on..." Then you've given him a direction to resolve whatever that issue is. Ask your coaches, I guess, tell you that, interlocuting, but you're coaching him, okay? To help him know what you want him to work on. And you do it as a team, as a board. Very good.
I think "we" understand what slogans say. We understand what the vision says. We, when we unpeel that onion, what does it look like in real time?
Good.
That's what we, that's what we question and demand and request, and it gets, it gets dicey. Gets real dicey.
What does it look like? What does it mean? We know what it's supposed to be, how does it get to... Okay, so you're spending some time on the wins and the hows, okay? The power that you really have is the whats. What do we want to do? What do we want to do? And then, of course, your honor to your, to the district is to explain to everybody why we want to do it, so that they all know why you want to do it. That's the power. Where, and you're here to help kids, I can say that without saying, "That's why you're here." You're here to help these kids succeed. That's the power. So what do we want to do to help these kids as a board, as a "we," okay? Us and we. I get excited, sorry. Don't mean to weigh my...
No, no.
But that's what, so, and then, you decide, and then his charge is, his charge is to just put together the hows, here's how we're going to do it, okay? And here's, then we're going to do it, and then here's what, and then who gets to evaluate? You do. And you do it through your evaluation, him accomplishing your goals. That's, 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 remember we said, in the perfect world, that's what the perfect world is. Very good. Another question? Another question.
And this is for Dr. Faust, too. We had talked about having committees, because currently, we are not heavily committed, but there are many districts, especially when we went to the conference, that talked about the importance of having committees within the board. So, is, is that something that, Dr. Faust, I know you mentioned it previously, but is that something that we have to tell him that we're interested in doing, or is, input isn't his objective? How does, how does that work, or?
So, we have to define what committees we want, and what we want to accomplish, and then we, and then you, as the board, sign up for committees that you want to be part of.
Board policy says the board establishes the committees, like a finance committee, a media committee, a communications committee, whatever we establish, bond and interest committee. So, the board policy says the board establishes committee, then we would establish, however, procedure, none more than three on each committee. How meet, how to report out, the duties of, and they're temporary committees.
They're generally ad hoc, very good. Great, the board decides if we need, we're getting ready to do some facilities planning. Do we need a facilities committee? We're getting ready to do that, a great, yes, we need, we need to focus on communication. We need to put a communications committee together, okay? Now, the power of a good committee is the people that are in that committee can give you great insights when you get back together with the board. There are some that would tell you the power of the committee is if we're not careful, they can become a mini-board. So, that's, that's always the responsibility of the board to make sure that that doesn't happen, because you don't want the, you don't want the communications committee to come in and be a little separate board, as if they, they serve the board in that committee. So, that's what, so some boards use them, and they use them very effectively, other boards don't use them at all. It's really up to you to decide.
So, in answer, we've had that conversation, and I'll take the liberty to say, we've kind of, I have, we have responded to Dr. Faust saying, let me get a few things off the plate, and then we get to it. So, we need to get to it by February, because we are, are moving into, so, so we need to then circulate, I would suggest us circulating to him, myself, whomever, the board, list of ideas, which, I mean, the finance is no-brainer, I think communication is no-brainer, but facilities, but, but what would we be willing to serve as well? There's no need to have a committee and nobody wanting to serve. It sure would make these types of gatherings less cumbersome, because some of that discussion with staff, it would have already taken place. And then, and with you, here again, with, with information, and like we did the last time, knowledge of the communication committee meeting X. Be questions, responses, so then we can get back to here. It's, it's not as much layering, if I understand.
What I hear you saying, too, is, you see, it's not as cumbersome, but it could be more effective.
Correct. It could be less, it could be more cumbersome, because we may not have asked the right questions.
Right, that's true.
So, it's, it's sifting now for all of us to, to use this thing. Got an onion, there's always another eel on that onion that is important.
So, one of the things that I found beneficial about committees, let's say, for instance, like, especially with the bond committee, that individual or those individuals come to the bond meetings, they sit there, and then when it's time for us to present on the bond, those individuals are able to speak to the questions or the issues, because you've been there as a representative of the board, and so, you're actually, at that point, giving your rubber stamp, saying, this is good, this is good work, or, you know, we're working towards this, this is how it works, even when it comes to, you know, the, the finance committee. You're, you sat down, you've looked at, there's an agenda, the person who is the leader of the, that committee, meets with the chief of that department, sets the agenda, then you have the meeting with the other three, and it just rolls from there, and you, you become familiar with the process.
So, perhaps during lunch, we can have that informal conversation, just at least identify some, some committees.
Because I think as we think about moving forward, this is election year for us to bring on people for next year, we have to really try to get the process now, because like Wanda said, we don't want the, the new board members, who may or may not be chosen, to come in like we come in. So, there are some barriers that we already need to have in place, so it could be a smoother transition when people come in on the board, or have something that is just not ad hoc, it's just thrown out there, this is what happened, but have more consequential planning for ourselves to move forward. So, over lunch, yeah, that would be good to discuss. So, thank you.
Very good. Another good set of insights. I'll move you to the next page, it's on policy, the importance of policy. Only five questions, but as you can see, again, you scored very well. Written policy, how well are we doing on that? And, and remember, written policy, it's the law, okay? That's how, how we're focused on that. Process of our policy reviews, so I'm guessing that you use your attorney as well, and you have your superintendent and your, and your admin team come in, and you go through that. Policy review is constant, you have to adjust to state and federal laws that change constantly, that will land at your, at your doorstep. And then, of course, your policies are your laws for the district, as long as they don't break federal law. Input before adopting policies, make sure you have a chance to share thoughts and work through that. Written, write clear policies so that everyone understands them, you scored well, and then regularly monitoring policies. And again, it's constant, and generally, policies are a reaction to an incident, right? I mean, something happened, we have speed limits because people didn't drive speed, and that's something that you will deal with in your role as board member. Someone wore an inappropriate attire to school, or didn't, then you have to, well, we have to have a policy for that, we call it a dress code, you, all those things, but those are, that's your responsibility as board. So, I thought you scored very well on that. And someone used the term, the next one is the next page, which is on finance, and someone used the term "no-brainer." This is critical, it's the budget, we have to do that well. So, you're rating on the importance of finance, you can see you scored high, you know it's important, and you scored well on it. You have a good long-range fiscal forecast, you have budget, you have priorities in your budget, you know what's important to you, you do understand your financial health.
Define what that means.
Pardon me?
Define financial health, because there's, there's an outlier, and there's an outlier for a reason. I don't know the reason, but...
Yeah, well, and part of that, and I don't know why someone chose that, Tiffany and that, I would guess there's someone who might be worried, we're still in the middle of a lawsuit, an unresolved lawsuit. We don't know what, our money all comes from tax-based, you know, resources, at the legislative level, we don't know exactly what will happen. We don't know if there's going to be, I think you probably read there, there are some people who want to change. Who gets to decide how much dollars, there's a challenge to the Supreme Court. We don't know if they, Mark Paulman, you know Mark well, Mark and I had this discussion literally just yesterday, there's things that are happening at the federal level that we don't know. It's hard for boards to make a, a constant plan when you don't have absolutely control, absolute control of your resources, and that, that, I don't know why they thought that, but those are some of those reasons. I've also heard people say, well, there might be a recession. I mean, we've all lived through one, well, I'm old enough, I've lived through a bunch of them, but there's, you know, we've all, we know what happens when, and it impacts us, and so it impacts our resources. So, I'm guessing that is part of that.
There are no comments, or were comments?
Yeah, there weren't any comments at the bottom of that one. And then, we balance money, community, and students, you have to have, I, there's an old saying, we can do anything we want in a district, but we can't do everything we want. And that's the challenge that you, you're facing like any other board, because you have to prioritize. You don't have enough resources to do everything you want. So, how are we going to find a way to do, tend to approach the board to this thing? The last one is board superintendent relationships. I thought this, I thought you did a good job on this as well, you realize how important it is, you had trust and respect, was scored fairly high. Authority to delegate to the superintendent would be the biggest gap, and I'm guessing that goes back to what you literally talked about five minutes ago, the what versus the how, you know, what, what role does, do we use Dr. Faust in versus what role do we play? And I was working with the board just the other day, Western Kansas, and I, and I asked them if they'd ever served on any other boards. Yes, they have, they've been on church boards, on 4H boards, and, and the difference between a church board and a 4H board is that when you guys get together and make a decision, when you're done, you generally go, well, we need to, we need to, we need to redo the park out behind the building. And so, when the meeting's over, you go home, you get your shovel, you get a rake, you put your gloves on, you all meet, and you all do the work, right? School boards are different than that. When you, when you decide what you're going to do, then you turn to Dr. Faust, and you say, now, you get your shovel, you get your rake and your gloves, and then you go make it happen, okay? And sometimes, we struggle with that, because what, what, my, you know, the other board I was on, we did, we thought of it, and then we did it. Your job is to think of it, but it's his job to execute.
But then, you also have to look at the history of a district where, and you don't have to agree with me, but historically, our superintendent has run the board. Those who have been on there before, they may not agree with it, but from the outside looking in, that's how it was run. Whatever she said, that's what pretty much went down, and they pretty much rubber-stamped whatever went down. So, yeah, you wanted to work together, it shouldn't be a dictatorship, it should be, yes, we set the policy, you go out, you do it, but that's been an issue.
Okay, well, and you know, you, you've lived your history, I don't live your history, that's a good insight, but how are we as a board going to decide? Our role is to, all the power lies with the board, you're the decider. You decide, his job is to execute what you decide. He, he doesn't get a vote on the board, you make the decision. So, you decide what we do, and the power that you have is to make sure you communicate to everybody why we're doing it. That's that communication piece, because then people understand when they, when you explain why. Again, I'm old, you can relate, as my dad used to say, because I said so.
Right.
And I'm ready to answer.
Not anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not anymore.
Community, because I said so.
Not anymore.
This is why, so that's part of it, so good, good. This is part of it, again, remember your very first question, we just haven't spent enough time together, we just haven't spent enough time together? That's what you have to find time to do, and I know it's hard to do that.
And as we educate ourselves to the role, which is not expanded role.
That's right.
But we also are educating our community to a, a progressive, proactive board, whom have not been used to that, and so, it's a little uncomfortable for some community members to see that we are doing our job. So, that's just an editorial.
Okay.
Wouldn't you agree?
This, this, this was your board, board superintendent relation, again, I thought the last three, you have clear expectations, you do your rebound, and you redirect complaints. Again, probably the other hardest challenge of a board member is you're going to have someone who thinks you should do something different. You ever notice that? Someone picks up the phone and calls you, someone runs into you and tells you, 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 why, why are you doing it? Redirect some of the things that you can right back to superintendent, that's, that's his role, okay? Though we, I always try and, these brand-new board members, you guys aren't brand-new anymore. Never be disrespectful. Remember, that's the people that elected you. But, but then redirect where we can actually resolve the issue, because as one individual board member, you're one board member, and we can hit a "we" back to the "we" again.
And I think also, we have to recognize that where our role is in, okay, so if something's going on at the school, or something's going on, have you talked to the principal? Have you communicated it? Have, because the superintendent is only one person. So, if you have seven people sending five different emails every week, so we have to know, too, and be comfortable with not knowing the chain of command, the reporting, if we see something, say something, rather than feeling like it's all on us to try to resolve their problem. But it's actually where does it need to go, or where to run.
We are in the midst of building a program. I've sat down with Rashid, the programmer, and with Joe Fives, and to speak to that, because when I get those, of course, on top of yours, I mean, I get some more emails stumped throughout, so sometimes you get the email responses at 11:00 at night, or, you know, just maybe 1:00 in the morning, so that we can help give you a, a better evaluation of it. There's going to be a product that they are creating, it's called Board Referral. So, in the event that you get that information, it'll come in through, you'll have access to it, you'll type into what the problem is, it'll go to one person in our office, and then they'll assign it to whatever department, the department lead will then take it, and then it'll give them, let's say, it may be, let's say if it's a, a big issue, it may take amount, a couple of days, but then, the report will then, they will respond back, it'll go back to your inbox, and you just check it.
Good.
But we're going to be training you on what that looks like, because being inundated, I love all of you.
Right. How many, how many elementary schools do we have?
Thirty.
Thirty. You haven't come visit my elementary school yet.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, and, and overall, when I got this, I got, I got to complete it Thursday night, I built, built the, built the report yesterday, and overall, when I, then I thought there's only one, if I had to say, what, what, one area you really need to focus on, you addressed it the very first time. We've got, we've got to spend some time together, getting to know each other, and so, and build a level of trust, so that even if you don't agree with you, or whoever, you know, you know, you know, you're still working, working on it.
You really disagree.
Yeah, yeah, and learn, and you said that, whoever said that, that was exactly right. It was, we learned, we need to learn to disagree agreeably, it's not personal. The other thing that I would tell you, and the rest of their comments you can read through, and you can see the individual scores, remember, don't let an outlier determine, it affects the average, don't let it determine your insight. But at the same time, hey, if there's a reason that someone says, we need to look at it, we need to talk about why, but is there something we need to do differently or better? And, and it becomes, you, you own it, it's your board culture, you decide what you're going to do and how you're going to, to use it. But you shared some great insights today. You, one of you mentioned, we know what this is, we know that's what we're focused on, okay? How do we find a way to agree to accomplish those goals?
Where's the individual data?
The individual data is on, on the very first two pages, and then the graphs at the top.
Says board average and average, area average.
Yeah, yeah. This is the individual scores.
Oh, those are individuals, but they say average.
Yes, yes. And then, if you turn the chart...
Average of that individual question.
Yes, and if you turn the chart over, you'll notice it shows the individual scores of, oh, I tripped on that, individual scores of each person.
So, on the second question, it says, does your board have improvement goals for itself? So, this is the setting where we need to set improvement goals for ourselves, is that correct?
Yes, that's...
And then, what should they be based on, these questions, probably?
That's the answer to the very first set of questions. Are we, are we, are we respectful of each other? Do we value each other's opinion? Are we able to work agreeably? Those would be some, and that's that code of conduct, code of ethics, and, and we, I know, I know they have one here someplace, because they can put one together years ago. Are we following it, though? And we, it can't be, we don't send those out to districts, we'll share them, and you know why we don't send them out? Because there's no one who can enforce them. And I can't, no one can come in here and make everyone get along. No one can come here and make sure, but who, who, who does that?
Elector.
You have to decide.
The elector does it.
Yeah, you do, you're, you're, yeah, well, you, and you deal with that, and same thing at the P. You know, if, if nobody can make you all get along, you have to decide.
Of course.
So, that's the power of the board, it's the power of the board culture. So, those would be the things, and so, kind of those first questions, the last time I was here, by the morning, that was a Saturday night's call, I think, those were some of the things we talked about, in, in a retreat, and you need, you need to do it where there's no, you can have great discussions without pressure to have to make a decision, because it changes everything. Because it changes everything when you have to do that. Because you've been hour and hour, you've got to make a decision.
I do.
So talk or redaction, admire. Questions?
Okay, again, sir, you know, would you say it's a fair assessment of this self-evaluation exercise? That we know, I think, were we pretty objective about identifying where we are with our current information versus, and also knowing what's important? Is that a fair?
Yeah, I thought you did, I thought you did very well on that. Because it's not for me to tell you what's important in all scenarios. You guys, the reason sometimes it's not important because that's a given, we already do that. Yeah, well, that's, well, we do that already. So that's not that big a deal. Other times, it's not important because, by our big picture radar, that's not that important. That's why in an ideal world, all of them are important, and we do them all well. Okay? But that doesn't mean that, when I looked a few years, I thought, I thought it was a very good report. The only thing that stood out to me was, we need, we've got to find a way to make sure we're all on the same page.
True.
That's the only thing that stood out. And that was your, that was your low score, and even that wasn't a terrible score. Because there, I think I told you earlier, part of your insights is, well, we don't all have to be great friends to still be a good board. I'm not going to say it doesn't make it easier, I'm not going to say it doesn't make it more enjoyable, but you don't have to be. There's no, there's no rule that says, oh, you're a board member, oh, and you're all friends too. And they work that way. You have to, you have to be, you have to get along well enough that when you serve, when you sit down at the table, you can work well together.
True.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for this. I really appreciated the questions and the process. It was a lot of questions, I was like, when will this end?
We were doing it online?
Yeah, I'm like, but I appreciate the analysis and in-depth questions because I don't think it really registered until I was like on page three. Oh, we probably all need to be at four and four.
Yeah.
Like, you know, so I was.
Confusing misleading, like, the first part is what you're supposed to do, the second part ideally.
Right. And then I'm like, you know what? These are things we need to really be honing in on doing. These are, these are some things that our goals should be. So I would like to rec, to just suggest that we take time to think about it and think about what our improvements as a board goals could be, and maybe have someone compile the list or send them, so that we can be able to effectively answer this question. Does your board have improvement goals for itself? Well, the next time we get together, maybe in the fall or whenever.
I don't think we should wait that long.
Right. I'm saying, just so that we could be able to effectively know the answer.
Right.
It doesn't, I'm not saying whenever, I'm just saying that we need to probably put this in place so that we will know for ourselves as well.
Well, Dr. Faust and I, well, we were waiting to surprise you, but we'll be spending a lot of quality time together.
Oh.
As we go into this budget workshop, as well as the other that we had previously this morning. So I would think that maybe we can carve out, it's just probably two Pollyanna, a little bit each month when we meet together, that we just kind of talk in a brief little segment, this type of, these types of activities or this type of data.
And one of the things that I did learn, and both Carol and I, earlier this school year, we went to the KASB workshop so that we could learn some of the, some of these things. And I think that did help us a lot as well. And for those of you who have, who are new and who have not gone, to research and find out what workshops are being open to help you as a board member, to be able to be more a little bit solidified in your, in the process of what you're doing. And especially since you mentioned there may be newer people coming on, it was very beneficial, very much so. Thank you.
I remember that evening. Remember that evening, yeah. There's always something.
I'll advertise for you. We have never sat down and looked at this collectively.
There's always some good professional development opportunities, and the interesting thing is, we always expect our staff, we get better to help our kids, we're better to help our staff.
Yes.
And so that's a good insight. So I appreciate getting to spend some time with you today.
Thank you.
And if you have questions, let me know. For those that, let's do that, and maybe we can, just any questions for discussion, let us know if we can ever serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are at KAS lunch break, but where did Susan go? Oh, she's in the back. How about we take five minutes, get your lunch, and then we'll just have a informal conversation during lunch. Otherwise, eat for 30 minutes, and then we can get into our board responses, because we don't want to push the agenda out too far. Want to eat 15 minutes?
15 is fine.
Okay. So it's 11:56, let's have lunch, and at 12:15, we move to board listening tour.
Okay.
All right. You win. Okay. Good afternoon, and thank you for coming out this afternoon, and we're glad it's not snowing and raining and all of that above. With respect to your time, excuse me, we are not on schedule, but we will try to be respectful of your time. We're at a place, item number six, board listening tour, discussing board response to listening tour concerns. However, it was brought to my attention, it's something that we don't do, I've never seen done in my four years, but that at the beginning of the agenda, it says board norms and protocols, and the next to last bullet point says, we agree to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting. And I've never seen it happen. So we'll read it, then we'll, of course, try to agree to it and practice it. So we agree. We've never read. To respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. For your, some, and of course, you didn't have to be here, staff, but item four, we did conduct a self-evaluation. And as the board moves forward, we will be meeting a lot more regularly, and so we're going to be aware, conscious, proactive in self-checking, if nothing else, to determine that we are making decisions for the district most effectively and efficiently. All right. Dr. Faust, would you like to guide us in our discussion of the listening tour, the board's last year listening tour?
Sure. So last year, the board was proactive in going out and doing a listening and learning tour to, throughout the community. And what has taken place now is we have gotten insight from there, listened to the questions, and armed those questions out to the right department so that they can then be able to articulate what was done or what needs to be done, what actions need to be taken. So Dr. Strickland headed up that project, so I'm going to give him the floor so he can share with us where we're going to go with.
Before you get started, let me thank you. It appears that the comments were captured at each of these five locations, and that the responses are appropriately divided up. Only problem, some of the font is really small.
I thought the same thing. I've got it printed out here, and I'm struggling with that myself. So we'll get that.
We have an enlargement.
Updated for that. But good afternoon to you, board.
Good afternoon.
As Dr. Faust said, that reminded us that this was an activity the board conducted last spring and through the summer. And we had some good people that captured all of the comments. And what we did was we categorized the comments and put them in groups and got them connected to the appropriate leaders and department directors within the system, and they provided some overarching responses to them. Some of the comments were very specific, and frankly, when they were made, they were dealt with at the time, but we still kept everything right there. And the responses that the directors provided, again, were some overarching comments. But they're there, and you have to contact people related to each of those responses. So if you want to do some follow-up, you'll know who to contact. But for the most part, everything at least was addressed or is in the process of being addressed through our work as a system. But there was one category that I thought it may be prudent to bring to this board to discuss how they want to follow up with it. There was a request at one of the listening tours that the board established some kind of venue for students to have input and some thinking. And so that might be an area that the board wants to take some time to discuss and how they might want to go about responding to that request. Some things to consider, I know that Dr. Faust has a superintendent form where he invites students to share some thinking. That might be an area where board members may hear and get connected with students. I have seen in various different organizations where sometimes they have a student representative that connects with the board at times and hears some things and provides some perspective for, from a student level that may even actually are, I've heard it called a student rep on the board. Obviously, they don't have a voting right or anything like that, but they just are a student voice on the board. But those are two options that the board may consider as ways to collect some student input and be responsive to the requests from the listening tour. So I will be quiet, answer any questions that you may have, or defer to some of the directors that are here that may be able to respond more specifically to some of the responses. But again, I believe that one thing that's left to be addressed is how the board wants to respond to that request from students.
Okay. Dr. Faust, if possible, we'd like to go through each because some, in general, not long, we can read for ourselves. But some of the comments as this first grading, we're putting together, we will, well, what's the status right now? I'm on the very first, very first where it says, first responses. I'm sorry. Yep. Assistant superintendent's response, under that, the community comment was looking at...
I'm not sure which.
No, go down to the next.
Okay.
South branch.
No, I'm looking at beneath the public comment, our administrative content, that's showing up on your screen.
Where is that?
Go to your agenda. Look at it.
I don't have it.
No, you have it. Then you're not logged in. You have to log in.
Just go to listening.
Right there, that attachment.
This one.
This attachment. This attachment. Ooh. Yours aren't there.
Are you logged in?
Let me go back and see. Did you log me out?
Went through this thoroughly, but I didn't.
Why, when you got here?
Oh, oh.
Each one of them, yeah.
This would be right here. Or is she on the public? It said their administrative content.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Just a little bit to the right. Yeah, right there, right there. Log in. Click up where it says user, username. Put on.
If you're at the public side, it won't show up.
Yeah.
Right.
Sign in this one.
Well, maybe I can kick it out by then.
Did I get it? I read through all of them and highlighted notes, but I didn't see that.
Didn't see those responses?
The administrative content.
Now you got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Your first.
Your first one?
Alan Keen and Lisa Martinez.
We had an elementary committee that's been meeting all year. We're going to add middle school and high school folks to that, but we have not added them yet. So we will be adding them soon. We've kind of gotten thrown off with a few off days, but we will get them invited and get it going hopefully by the first of February. We have, we, the intent is to have a plan in place that we can implement for next year.
So the what?
To have a plan in place so we can implement it for next year.
Next year. So, so what would, so is that, if a parent walked up and said, so what are you doing by grading? What would be our response?
That we're putting a committee together that's going, we're forming a committee of teachers, principals, ICs, if we would like to, some parent support on there, we can, if you would like, and we can, but then we will be meeting on a regular basis to look at the grading policies. There was, that particular comment was a specific thing about late work not being accepted, but we're going to make it much broader than just that.
And that that committee will start hopefully the first part of February? That the plan will not be in place until academic year 2019, 20?
Right. Because we, you tend to not, with a grading policy, we don't do it mid-year and shift everything. We do it start fresh with the year.
Because there's a, so are you, do you feel that there is a lack of understanding of the grading, current grading policy?
Lack of understanding and maybe some disagreement, particularly with the exception of late work, there are all sorts of opinions on that.
Right. That's kind of a special category.
Right. But that would be part of the policy we put together an agreement on.
Have you met with those principals, ICs, and or teachers to make sure that they clarify what the policy is that we have currently with parents?
We've done, I mean, we've done it several times, we can always do it again. I mean, yeah.
Repetition is always.
That's right. You are absolutely correct.
And PTA?
PTA, I've, PTA has talked about this as an issue. I missed the last PTA meeting, I'm going to get with Rachel, and we're going to put a list of things together that, one of the struggles with for a PTA to really exist in a school, it's up to parents.
Right.
Not the school building, and getting those parents involved. So I know that the state level of PTA folks have ideas to help schools, and we're going to try to put together some tips through the PTA to try to help those schools that don't have it, get a group put together.
And for general consumption, the reason we are going through this is that the board has a report to make. And so it doesn't need to say, February 2018, this was the concern, and we don't have anything current to report. So that is the reason we are asking for input. Ms. Humphries? Thought you raised your hand. Oh, sorry. Questions, comments before we move off of this one? Thank you. Next one, did you ever get it?
I did.
Okay. Next one is, if we go across the communications. Ms. Bedford-Fears? Are you aware of the... Your opening statement is, speaks volumes. A key component of any organization is effective communication.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I was making sure this mic.
The response speaks volumes. A key component of any organization is the effective communication.
Yes, it is definitely, Dr. Nguyen. But one of the other things to remember about communication too is that while I have a team of individuals who definitely work hard every day at communications, it's up to everyone to communicate effectively. And so it's not just up to one group or department of five people. So that means that on the school level, that principals have to communicate with their staff, staff, and in the buildings, at the school buildings, they also need to communicate with their parents. So we are going to spend some time working with... So we are going to spend some time working with them to talk to them about communications and communicating effectively. I can tell you, one of the things that we did at the beginning of the school year was to print a publication, which I have a copy of, which I can provide to you, which talks about all the services that we provide in communications and how we are crisis communicators, strategic planners, all of that can be of help to them. We would also, one of the things that we're going to be doing with our group is putting together some tips. We've already given them some tips for updating their website and what's important to have on the homepage of the website. We will also be working with them to update the website so that they have a cohesive look across the board. If you look at them now, they all look differently, but we want them all to go along with the district's website. The district website, as you know, is under, it's being redesigned.
Under construction.
And it looks great. It's under construction, being redesigned, however you want to define it, but it looks great. We've shown that new website to a couple of folks in the room, and they seem to like where we're going. We're also going to do usability tests with that website. So we want to get that district website together first before we start tackling those school building websites. So we've got a lot of plans in the works that are underway now and that will be continuing to go forward, not only with our staff, but with the staff in buildings to help them communicate effectively. And from time to time, we also send them communication that we ask them to put on their website, like with the inclement weather plan, we sent that to the building principals, and we asked them to share that with parents, to put that out there. Because what I know to be true is that when parents get information, they would rather receive that information from their schools. They know those folks. They don't know us in communications. So they tend to trust that a little bit better. So we will keep funneling information to them, and we know that they're getting that information out, so we're heavily dependent upon them, but we'll also keep providing them tips.
And so one of the things that, I mean, of course, coming in from the outside is a great thing because I get to see some things that we should be doing. And just the raw truth is that we have taken advantage of not being transparent and communicating with parents. One of the things that I've shared with Melissa is that, you know, when I was actually first starting and looking, I was actually on school websites, and those websites didn't even work. Now, that's not the communications department. That's up to the school leadership.
Right.
And so we've talked to school leadership because there are updates on like the principal message that should be out there, what's going on in your building should be out there. I know that my own children, each week I get an email from the principal that goes out to all parents that talks about the week. And so it's just emails, so I'm constantly in communication with, but we have, and I'll say it because there's no secret, we do this because our parents, who we serve, we wouldn't do this to any other parent of a different economic status. And that is the truth, and I know that people are looking and thinking like, oh, my gosh, she said that. I'm saying that because that's the truth. We have to do better with communicating with our parents. And it's not that, oh, they can go to the website or we don't have time. Yes, you do. A lot of this stuff will not get to the board members, and I'm not saying that you shouldn't get it. Complaints wouldn't get to you if we communicated it out at the school level. And so we have to do better. And so we are, I've shared with Melissa, and she and I have had the, those strong conversations and literally what should it look like, the training and putting the training in place for the communications for our principals. And we are, you can actually, I recommend that any of you, all of you, just look at five different websites from the school.
Yep.
And you'll see why one should get frustrated as a parent. It's not just about educating the kids, it's about what I call the curb appeal. So what does it look like before you drive up? Before I make an announcement, so before I go to your school, if I'm an outsider, I'm going to look, what is it? I can't even get to any of the sites because none of them are actually even working on your site. That's a problem. That's a problem. So yes, communication, we effectively communicate, we attempt effectively, but it can't always come from the district office. So we've got to make sure that, and even in that new website, if you look on our website, that's hard to read. So each of our departments are actually recreating and sitting down with our webmaster to present their new web, because we are going to make sure that what we're doing is grade A. If we wanted to make sure that if our parent, we can give our parents the same amount of quality that parents who have, you know, multimillion dollars. We have a $300 million budget, and we need to flaunt it that way. We have access to great technology. All of us sit around here with Apple appliances, but we have to make sure that our people, our clients are being served in that way. And that's the thing that I, it just really just gets in my skin that we take advantage of our client.
Is that you?
Do we have one person in the district that is just told that their whole job is the website?
No, not their whole job.
Where they could provide support to the schools?
We do, we do provide support. So each school has, and the question was, do we have one person in the district who is supportive or only does our website? We don't have one. He does multiple jobs, but you can guide, and then it's there one person at each school if you will provide insight.
Well, at the schools, the schools have possession of their own websites. We don't actually go in and construct those websites for them, although Mike Keener, who is from the district, who is working on the new design of the new website and takes care of this current website, he has been available to them and has met one-on-one with their particular website person at their school to help them learn how to input data, create new pages, that sort of thing. So he has made individual appointments, and a lot of the schools have done that. They have actually made appointments with him, and he's been there, and he's helped them to be able to go in and update their website. Now, what happens is during the school year, every school year, we usually have a new person, so he has to go back again and go ahead and retrain someone else. I don't know if the person left or they no longer wanted to be that webmaster for their school. But going forward, what will happen when we start working with them to get that cohesive design for those sites is that we'll be able to give them some great tips for them to be able to update those websites a little bit more effectively. And one of the things that we've said best practice-wise is to have more than one person trained in your building to update that website. So I think where the problem runs in is if you have just one person that can do it, if that person is absent, or if that person no longer does it, then we are starting over again, and we have to retrain someone else to be able to use it. And then all of those websites are all different. If you look at them, some of them are on School Loop, some of them have a WIC site. So you can't get a cohesive look if they're all on different platforms. So that's one of the first things we'll have to tackle is get them all on the same platform. But first things first, we've asked them with their current site is to please get it updated, to have a calendar of events out there, to have stories out there, to have updated pictures out there, to have a message out there from your principal welcoming people to the school, to have that link button for Infinite Campus. We've asked them to do certain things out there already to make sure you have the correct logo out there on the site and not the old logo. Correct logos for the district, for Diploma Plus, things like that, we've asked them to do. That goes a long way so that when we go get that cohesive look and we move things over, we're not having to sit there and say, well, this is wrong, and the wrong logo and things like that. So we're trying to get some things into place right up front before we do that.
As a follow-up to that question, the person in the school who's in charge of the website, is that a supplemental job where they do it with supplemental pay? Is it a teacher? Is it a secretary? Who, who does the website? Who has experience to do that?
Usually, the school leader selects that person.
It varies. It could be, it's a number of different people. It varies.
But do they get paid extra in addition to their other duties? Or is that part of their job description?
I can't answer that either. That might vary too. I have no idea. I mean, we could find that out.
That would be interesting to know if, because maybe that's why some schools' websites are not as updated, maybe the person is overloaded, or they don't have one single person really trained to do it.
Right. And as I said, you know, having more than one person, you know, would be very helpful to them because it's a lot to update a website when you have other duties, and they definitely have other duties, whoever's doing that at the school site. So I definitely recommend two to three people.
Yeah, I would like to see if, when you have time, a report showing which school personnel is in charge of the website at the school, whether they're a teacher, whether they're an instructional coach, or whoever it is, and how they allot their time to have enough time to update it, because there's a lot of information that parents would like to have put on the website. It needs to be constantly updated.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to agree with Ms. Humphries. We do need to find out who exactly is doing it. And if it is a teacher, it should be a supplemental pay, because that's a lot of work in addition to what you already have to do. And it's not a complaint, it's just a valid point. And as an educator, I know what that's like, that you already have all this on your plate, and then you're going to add something else, and they're going to start out energetic with it, but then it gets a little old. And if you want to have some consistency, that if you gave them a supplement, we're not saying give them $20 million, but give them something to say that we appreciate the time and the effort, that you might have that consistency in that position if they know they're going to get a little something.
Mm-hmm.
And it would help them out. But if we could just find out who's doing it.
Yes.
And then you might be able to, somehow, we got to figure out how to create some more funds to help them out, that they may be able to get somebody to do it and to continually do it.
Thank you. I'm glad you asked that because at the last principals' meeting, we definitely told the principals to get that list together for us because we were going to be coming for it. And so we're going to be sending an email out next week to ask for that information. So we should have that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the questions and the comments.
I wanted to clarify, so the principals, who's held accountable for the website? Is it the principals that are held, should be held accountable?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Melissa, did I hear you saying you're going to go for everyone to have the same provider as our provider? They'll just provide various pages?
Right, the same look. Because if you look at all of the different ones, if you go on the high schools, they're mostly on the School Loop site.
Right.
So they have, you can see that they're updated.
Right.
But they have the same look. But then if you go down to some of the schools, you might see a WIC site, which they have a different look. The templates are not the same. You can't get the cohesive look. You can get the same information on the front page, but the looks will be different. But if you want that continuity across all things in content and look and appeal, although it would have their school colors, their school pictures, that sort of thing, then you need to all be on the same platform. If you don't want that, then we can get the same information out there, but the looks will all be different.
So clarify for me, those who still have the School Loop, which you said the high schools are pretty much all still on School Loop.
They seem to be the ones with it.
And we're provide, and we're still paying for that service or not? Or are they still doing it as part of the contract? And then if so, if all schools had access to having the site under School Loop, I'm not sure how long this transition will take, but have we thought about requiring, if we're paying for School Loop for all the schools to have, is there a way that we can require everybody to just move to School Loop until we get ours? But I'm not sure of the, how long that, the phase is from where it is now to where we want to be.
Yes. As far as the School Loop question, yes, we do have School Loop, just the portion for the websites. There, you know, it doesn't have all the features that we used to have. It's just for school websites because the school, there were so many schools using it, not all of them, but there were a lot of schools using it, and they weren't ready to move to something else. We're trying, eventually, I think, what the webmaster, Mike Keener, had talked to me about was moving them to WordPress, which, which will be free, but we're not there yet. It would give them some time to work with the schools so that he can teach them, whoever is going to be at the school, to teach them how to use WordPress.
Right, because my understanding that School Loop would push everything, like if one updated it for the district, it would be on all the district who had a School Loop website. So it wouldn't be necessarily up to the school to update every single thing because some of that is pushed out to School Loop to be consistent?
It should really be by school. The only thing that was really consistent recently with School Loop that went out district-wide, actually went out to all of their customers, is to handle the accessibility so that we would be compliant for accessibility. So that, that's what they were trying to push out for everybody. So there's like a new template for that.
Okay, because it seemed like the calendar was consistent, like the calendar updates or something was consistent.
Yeah, I don't know that they're necessarily using the same template.
Okay.
I think the schools actually can choose what they want to, and I think that's where you're getting some of that inconsistent look.
But we are paying for schools to have access to School Loop for a website.
Yes.
The schools are just deciding not to use them.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Drew?
No, my question was answered through the conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fives, need some more clarification. So, and this is consistent with what I understand, and please, Ms. Bedford Fears, if I don't understand, if you're looking for cohesion, does that, what does that mean based on what you just said? Schools choosing not to go one direction, what timeline are we, are you looking to build an infrastructure that all schools on the same?
Yes, exactly.
Platform? So what's your timeline?
Um, that, I think it would be more of a...
And again, I'm asking these questions because we're, we're writing our report. So when Ms. Humphries says, I'd like to have a report that says so-and-so, all of these categories, we need to have something...
Sure.
...to update our report.
Right. So School Loop was very easy for schools, folks in schools that aren't, that have maybe never created a website before. It's very easy for them to do it. And so that's where I think some of the schools went that direction. Others had already been using other tools prior to us ever even having School Loop, and I think they just wanted to stay with those. And there never, never really was any district policy that said, hey, you have to use one tool or another. And that's where we're trying to get to. And working with the webmaster, he is very familiar with WordPress. In fact, that's what our new site is going to be using.
Okay, so this is February essentially. What's your timeline for getting everybody to...
Again, I think he's going to work with each of the schools, and I think that's where his concern was. He didn't have time to do it as he's building the new website for the district. So he needed some time to get, get that completed, and then he's going to go to the schools and work with them to build WordPress sites. So all of the schools will be under WordPress sites. As for a time, I know that's working with, with the webmaster, Mike Keener. It's not through my department.
Then, then please relate to him that established some timeline that's reasonable and...
He reports to you.
Well, whoever.
Okay. Sorry, I'm back on again. So I'll, I'll take it back just a little bit. For the district website, which is under construction now, we're looking at an April 2019 release of that, April 2019. And so we are quickly creating those pages and that content, working with departments to get that information up. A part of that, Dr. Nguyen, will be that we will have usability tests, and we'll have focus groups where we will make sure that the site is doing what it's supposed to do. We don't want the site to be what we think it should be or have content that we think it should have, but we want it to be useful for the individuals who are using that site every day, which are parents and students and board members and things like that. So in the community, we want them to be able to use the site. So we're also going to have board members, you take a look at it too and go through the usability test, make sure it works for you too. We'll take that back, and we'll be able to tweak the site. So those usability tests will happen next month. So we're moving very quickly. As I said, the site is looking good, and we're getting a lot of content up there so that we can conduct those tests. And then once we see how folks do with those, then we'll be able to go back in and make tweaks in time for us to release this in April. A part of that, in our plan, our goals, we have March 2019 to begin work with those schools on those sites. We want it to be farther enough along on our site and know where we're at and how we're tracking on that to be able to work with them. A part of that next week is getting those webmasters and getting together with them because we need to have a conversation with them about how can we all work together to improve those sites? We don't want it to just be our decision, this is how your site should look, this is what it should do, but we want to take into account the problems that they've had and what they've encountered and how we can work together to get that site together, to get their sites together and to move forward. And all of our schools don't have websites either. So some of these schools have to come on board. They actually have to select someone that we have to work with too to create a site. So there are a lot of steps going into place. And so if you be patient with us, we're going to get there, but we first want to get that district site up, and then we want to work with them to get their sites going and to improve their sites. and to improve their sites. But in the meantime, all through that, it doesn't mean that we will not communicate with parents and do everything that we can do and have those tips out there to be able to work with them to better work with their parents.
True.
Send communication out. We have Infinite Campus for that. They can communicate directly with those parents, and it doesn't mean that any of that will stop, but they will continue to do those things. And we'll get those sites together too. And I would suggest too that they conduct usability tests too with their audiences too, to make sure those sites are doing what they need to do. And if there are PTAs in place, that would be the perfect spot for them to give help with that, to help them with those sites and what the information that's needed, because they'll definitely be able to tell us what's needed and what's not needed. And we conducted a survey with audiences to find out what we needed and what was missing on our site. So, I am going to suggest the same thing for them too, to their parents. That's, that's the way to go.
Other questions, comments? Because communication is more than website, number one. You've addressed it.
It most definitely is. It's more than that.
Because I know I've, I've gone on, and we all have horror stories. I've gone on, on the individual school sites and some don't even have, and Dr. Yegel will not appreciate this, but they don't even have a phone number.
Right.
And so, some folks still are using phones. And then, as, as we look at other surrounding districts and this, this age-old thing of called old-school homework can be broadened to the extent that what is, what is Ms. Fierce's third-grade class at ex-school doing this week? So that parents, after-school programs can support those students. And there's always been this resistance to, to the concept of USD 500 placing that on the school site. Not, not so much school activities, but I'll call it homework, be it, you know, we're going on a field trip tomorrow or whatever, but it's in surrounding school districts. And so, that's, that is a concept that maybe we have to talk through, but there's always been a resistance. And I couldn't figure out if we could put a man on the moon why we couldn't put homework online. So, that's my editorial for that. Any other comments on it? And again, we, we, the board, have to compile. So, Ms. Westfall is, is taking your comments, and, and then when you get some type of written idea, we'll put them all together. So, thank you very much. Any other more comments on that one?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment. Perhaps this is directed to Mr. King. You know, historically, lack of parental involvement in the PTA has always been an issue. What are we going to do? Are we doing anything about that? Do we have a strategy for getting more parents involved?
To be honest with you, that has not been under my wheelhouse to do. I've been sitting on the PTA as just a member of it. PTAs, for the most part, have always been the work of PTAs. So, it's, I really don't have a plan right now. That's why I was going to be working with the PTA for the tips and that, because they're traditionally organizations that are started by the parents of that school.
Okay.
So, Ms. Drew, I see you nodding. Maybe as a teacher, did you ever have experience with it? I know at Rosedale, when I was there, we, we had a group who, one year, there was a group of parents who were interested, and we finally got a PTA going there. And I'm not even sure it's still going, or it's been consistent since then, so.
What might be something to think about as we start to do things like communication and as Ms. Bedford-Fierce talked about how it really starts at the school, frankly, that building leader has a lot of influence on being able to recruit some parents and get them involved in the PTA. They may not know the actual logistics of how to start one.
True.
But a, a building leader knows the parents that are up there all the time, and if they don't have a PTA, those are the parents that they probably need to start recruiting and get them connected to an organization that can kind of channel some of that energy. So, as the system looks to move forward and engage parents more authentically and with PTA, I think it's an opportunity for them to partner with PTA, but really leverage the building principal to tap some parents on the shoulder to see who's kind of ready to lead that organization within their building.
I agree with that. As a teacher, we try to reach out to parents. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. But what I've been listening to is the idea that you have to start somewhere. And so, the fact that you're reaching out, there are some who will, some who won't, but the consistency in making sure that it is in place. Eventually, when parents begin to see the success of what you're trying to do, they will come on board. You have to learn to crawl before you can walk. And so, we're in the crawling stages, but once we get there, we'll get there.
And having been in the PTA for years, what is drawing card is like what Dr. Strickland said, is the principal or your child's teacher inviting you, asking you to participate in something personally, not just a note home saying, "Hey, we're forming a PTA," or "We're having elections." It's that personal contact that gets that parent to come in. And then, you have to decide what exactly is you want the PTA to be. Is it, you want it to be an educational thing for the parents, or you want them to raise money for the playground? There's a lot of different ideas of what a PTA is. And that's where working with the state and the PTA council can help. But the ideas, the new-age PTA, just like, you know, it's not, it's not tea and cookies anymore. Parents want something substantial. We're not just the room mothers anymore. We're the ones that are putting on parenting programs, sponsoring college fairs and things. That's what the parents of today seem to more, be more interested in than just being a PTA that comes to a meeting and then they go home and don't do anything. And it always means more when it's the parents running it versus the school secretary or the family advocate.
Right.
It's a slow process. We used to have every school year in a PTA, and it's dwindled down over the years. But it's, it's definitely an organization that has lots of resources for our parents and our teachers. And I'm a firm believer in them.
Thank you. Does diploma plus and the diploma plus responses, Sarah?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Do you have specific questions?
Well, I'm just, the response says, "Host students for hands-on learning opportunities, internships, job, job shadows, partner with teachers to bring relevance to lessons of study through teacher ent- extensions, externships and co-teaching." What's, just an update, please.
Yeah, an update is basically that we're continuing the work. We have key partnerships. You know our partnership definitely with Gear Up, and that cohort will be moving up to the ninth grade next year. So, there, we're working in partnership with them for some bridge programs to support the eighth to ninth grade transition. In addition, our partnership with Prep KC is allowing us to assist teachers with really integrating relevance into the classroom, into the content, and just really bringing extensions to the learning.
You know, if I'd add as a reminder to, Dr. Nguyen, you had mentioned, you know, how do you respond to community when they ask this? I would remind the board that you graciously, graciously allocated resources to support this work. For example, you have college and career coordinators in the schools, and you have diploma plus facilitators that help connect our students to those industry experiences. And they also facilitate them getting access to college courses too. And I know you all will be in budget discussions in the very near future, so that is a resource that this board has allocated to schools. So, again, to respond to this one from the lens of your constituents asking about that, as Ms. Ryder said, continuing to move forward with offering extensions for students, and you have supported that work by providing specific resources that help increase our students' opportunity and access to those things.
So, my question, so my question is, I've had a couple of parents who are, were still not clear, and the schools weren't clear, and the counselors weren't clear exactly how the pathways work. I'm speaking specifically to our partnership with KU and how they can get their degree one year after they graduate. So, what are we doing to make sure that process is cohesive to where we're all on the same page to know what path needs to be taken, how that looks if parents are reaching out and, and maybe not getting the information from the counselor or the principal or someone who's connecting, trying to get their students in? How can we improve that communication? Or what are we doing to make sure that we firmly know the pathway that they need to take to take advantage of the programs that we've set up?
One piece that we are working on, it's actually in connection with Infinite Campus. They have a, it's called an academic planner where students get to chart out their entire four years of their high school. And we've been working in partnership with student services in support of the counselors in really utilizing that as the tool to assist students in mapping out their four years so that they're on track and on time for those particular endorsements that they're choosing. In addition, for parents, we're also ensuring, again, that counselors are informed and the people at the building are informed, definitely both about the pathway options and just the course options in general. So, the, this tool in Infinite Campus will also be an assist with that. In addition, the work of the individual plan of study, which this planner kind of fits underneath that umbrella. In addition with that individual plan of study, we are also supporting schools to train teachers as advocates to assist students in kind of mapping out that four-year plan. So, those are kind of some of the different areas we are hitting on to address your concerns.
Are you adding the parents into that? You're talking about working with the kids, but the parents need to be third part of that stool so that they understand what their children are doing.
Yes.
And discuss it together.
Yes, definitely. Related to Melissa's example, that parents really trust the school sites primarily. So, we're trying to reach parents through informing broad, a broad spectrum of roles and positions at the school site. So, counselors are lead college and career coordinators as well so that they can kind of help share and spread the word about the opportunities that are available to students. In addition, we're working on building out a course catalog, which hadn't, which we haven't had in the district, so that students and parents, and it can kind of be that third point of what's available and which endorsements those particular course pathways can lead to for students.
Do you have a timeline for completion of that?
It, it will not be in time for current year. I can say that. It's for next year, we're building it. We want to definitely make sure it creates, that it's user-friendly and that, we also did kind of a revamp with our courses at the high school level, just the course coding and organization. And so, we're kind of in the midst of that and preparing for enrollment. And so, we won't have what I call a pretty catalog ready, but we'll have a basic list. Here's the, the choices for students so that parents and schools both can understand what's available.
Now, you'll have that for enrollment, this semester or for?
Correct.
Okay, so, we'd love to see your mock-up.
So, I would say by March.
Okay.
We will have the raw.
Okay, well, raw is good.
Course catalog ready.
Raw is better than nothing.
And then, we'll beautify it and make it digital and all of that for next year.
And just a question based on two questions. One of the comments was that they tried to get into diploma plus academy and couldn't, essentially, could not, and not to say any names, I guess that's a, a HR or how do you handle that situation? And then, if a parent came in, let's say a parent came into our district and said, "Could you give me a list of student mentors?" Is that, is that, are those identified? It just says the response was become a student mentor. What does that mean? Can she see someone's computer? I'm just talking and. Kind of in the dark. Correct, and we are, that's all we have also. Each number's don't. Oh, I'm sorry. They can't see that. Okay, it says, "Host students for hands-on learning, serve as industry expert, become a student mentor." What does that mean?
That was Sarah's response.
They can't see.
It's under the response, Sarah, just kind of elaborating on what you meant. I think you were suggesting how parents and people in the community could get involved under your response.
Sorry, Dr. Strickland, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I, I'm just referencing Sarah to kind of what you're saying, become a student mentor. I believe Sarah was listing options on how community members can get involved and get connected through the diploma plus program. So, her response are just examples on how they can do that. And that's why I was specifically referencing those resources that you all have allocated, because those resources are the building-level resources that kind of manage how some of those partners get connected within the system.
So, you said a community member can become a student mentor?
Absolutely, but there's a couple of things that they have to do.
What's that vehicle? What's that?
I'm going to need to refer to Lisa Garcia-Stewart because they have to go through a background check, but they can volunteer through our system to become mentors or connected. Specifically, if they say they have like a business that they want to maybe illustrate or show how they can do that, they can work at the building site. The first point of contact I would suggest that they do is through the principal, and the principal can give a directive to one of those building-level resources. Now, if they're going to be an ongoing volunteer, then they definitely need to come down to the central office and go through the background check.
And how is this information disseminated to the community?
Ms. Stewart, how do we usually?
So, specifically, I want to make sure I'm answering your question about the mentoring protocol and plus, but if anyone wants to volunteer, we share that on our district and part of the community meetings that we're part of. And we also work with Caring for Kids, and they're our vehicle to recruit volunteers, faith-based organizations, mentoring, and expose them to the schools. And then, we create a process on how their work, just not just any mentoring, connects with what we're doing in our district and with the school so that it's intentional. They're going to provide tutoring or mentoring. They can't just drop in and out. They need to provide a consistent commitment through the school year. And then, we provide the background check, we provide a presentation and follow up with the mentoring and our vehicle, which is Caring for Kids.
And tell me again, how is that information disseminated to the community?
So, Caring for Kids, they help us to recruit the mentors or volunteers. They share it at faith-based organizations and in community venues.
Verbally, then?
Verbally.
So, they have to be on-site? So, if, if I'm not that, at that event, I have no idea who Caring for Kids is?
If you're not at that event, unless you contact us, which often many people do because of word of mouth, then, or they can go to our website and tell us that they want to volunteer.
And our website is the district website when you make that reference?
And on ours, it does say volunteering.
I've seen that.
Simply to have patients contact Valerie Anderson check.
So, go back to your point. So, diploma plus volunteers are, are connected to your volunteer button and that's the, hopefully they meet?
Yes.
Yeah. That's a struggle.
Well, it depends. I think, because people sometimes volunteer in several different ways. For example, if they want to do a one-time thing, then the, the vehicle to best do that would be through their building principal. The building principal connect them and let them know how they can get involved and specifically. What tends to happen with those things is teachers usually recruit, but if someone wants to get involved, they can get informed through that vehicle that Ms. Stewart just described. So, they're, think of it as two different parallel lanes, depending on what they actually want to do. As they investigate how they want to be involved, we can direct them what makes the, what makes the most sense.
So, in our report, one could say, and please advise us proper, correctly, if one wanted to participate diploma plus activities, they contact Ms. Sarah.
That would be an okay option, or they even could contact the building principal. So, in your report, I would give a couple of avenues from which they could do it. If you want to get involved, contact the building principal.
First.
Or contact the central office. Exactly.
Second, and then all other volunteer opportunities.
Absolutely. So, that would be like the three. So that would be like the three ways in which they could get involved. And I think through those connections, we would be sure that they were plugged into the most appropriate place.
Be placed on the district website.
Absolutely.
Yes.
How many questions over here?
Yeah, I had a question. You mentioned Gear Up, and I have the opportunity in December to go their graduation. And I thought the program is excellent, but it just saddened me that we only had about 60 people graduated. So I didn't know what you were doing to work with them because all of our seventh and eighth graders are involved in the program. And you talked about the expansion to the ninth grade. So somehow, I don't know if it's Gear Up or us or combo, how do we get more people involved? You have an excellent program, at least you're hoping that the parents already instilling in an early age, you're going to college, and now you have an opportunity, a vehicle in middle school that you can utilize to kind of prep to get them ready. And somehow, the information is not getting out or, I don't know what's going on. I'm not pointing fingers at you, but I'm just saying if we're working with them, how do we make it work? Because 60 kids, and we're talking about the entire seventh and eighth grade at every middle school, something's wrong.
Well, I want to clarify first that the graduation you attended was for parents who participated in parent curriculum, engagement, several classes they attended at their school buildings. And then that was the celebration that brought all of the parent graduates together. And that's done in partnership with another position you've gratefully funded, the family and community engagement specialists. We have one of those positions that we lovingly refer to as Faces at each of our middle schools. And so that was another avenue where we provided training for the engaged families curriculum. We provided it for the Faces position as well as all Gear Up staff. So this was kind of, that was the result of the first semester launch of that curriculum. So what you were seeing were the parents who could attend that evening who had graduated. So that particular piece will grow because there'll be new court classes for parents this second semester at the middle school level, again, in partnership with Gear Up. Then I want to address Gear Up. This year, I want to be clear, this new cohort, it's all students. It's all students, whereas previous cohorts where we've had Gear Up support has been specific clusters. But we got the best grant we could get with this cohort, and it covers all students. And again, current grade levels, seventh, eighth, getting ready next year to move eighth, ninth. So all students are impacted from Gear Up in that cohort.
Okay, I get that. Yeah, that helps, but I'm just saying, how do we get more involved? We're opening it up to all, but all is not participating. So I'm just wondering, what are we doing to help get them involved?
Are you referring to parents or students?
Well, I want, you want parents and students involved, but how do we get more young people, the students, to get involved in the program? And we want the parental support too because it takes everybody working together. So I'm just asking, I didn't know if you had something special you're trying to do. How do we get more involved?
Well, the great part about this cohort of Gear Up is the grant was written directly in support of Diploma Plus goals. So all students currently at the middle school, the seventh and eighth grade, are utilizing Gear Up support through the experiences they're participating in. So you may have seen on our front page about the students from Coronado who were selected to send their experiment to space. That was in partnership with Gear Up. And those are things, again, that are available to all students. So it's just through our experiences and the Diploma Plus work we've been doing, giving students exposure to college and careers, so visits to colleges and those pieces that kind of help students understand their interests. All of that Diploma Plus work we've been doing at the middle school is in partnership with Gear Up. So all students have that access.
Does that translate as every student enrolled then automatically participates in Gear Up activities?
Yes, they don't have to sign up for Gear Up, nothing. Just them being a seventh or eighth grader, they are covered through Gear Up.
Is this the first year that all kids have been eligible?
That's correct.
So hopefully the kids that really participated, the parents that really participated, will reach out to friends and other people and spread the word about the program.
Yes, and we've already seen that happening through that parent programming for sure.
Well, like an elementary person, which is not, and this is old school, so like, do you pin a note on me, seventh and eighth graders go home that I'm including Gear Up? I mean, that's the basic level of communicating that student is involved. I'm not going to translate, you know.
Well, I just wanted to know more. Is there more? Is there something else you're doing? But you answered it, and I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. The next says the finance response. This is Ms. Woodbury, it says, it says, how much funding goes into clubs? And then there's an explanation of 20%, 52% of mill taxes, but the response is that essentially fundraising by the schools deal with fun, deal with clubs.
For student activity, clubs, which I believe that's what this is referring to, that's done through fundraising at the club for the specific club level. There is some discretion at the, at the middle and high school level. If they want to have their student council contribute to a club, they can do that, but it has to be voted on by the student council. Student activity money is the student, so they are the ones who decide how it's spent.
And I believe a couple of those questions related to, one, some schools did not allow some sports citing funding. So swimming was an example, softball, a couple of different places cited that the school had decided it was funding issue, why they couldn't have sports at their location. Is that related to finances or is there something else or another reason why some clubs are at one school and not at others?
Well, with the way this was phrased, I took it to mean clubs as in not a sporting event. Now, sporting can be dependent also at some schools based on participation. So if they don't have enough students to participate to form a team, but it, that is not necessary, there'd be funding for a coach if they had student participation. But some of those, since this is kind of a nebulous, I'm not sure what really what the question is.
Maybe we've had more questions from parents than are on this piece of paper.
Yeah.
Because it seems like Dr. Faust is getting into administrative decisions, why a robotics club is at one place, why a softball team's another place, and why there's no swimming team anyplace. So we may, first, thank you for explaining this response. Secondly, thank you for bringing the question. And third, we had to revisit this because this is, this is broader than this response.
Dr. Skraggs, are you able to give any insight on the, from the high school experience?
Sure. The difference of the clubs? Yeah, you can hear me. Yeah, absolutely. And I don't see Mr. Criswell here, but anytime that we want a new sport or activity, like I would bet, and I'm just speculating, that the Harmon situation with softball is probably what's being discussed here. They didn't have a team, but they were trying to fundraise for a team, and so they started as a club. And I would bet that that's where that came from. But the reality is, when, when we have students who come to us with interest, we get their information, and if it's a, if it's a sport where it's sponsored by K Chef and our students can participate, we work at the district level and have had no problems working with, first, Mr. Thompson and then Mr. Criswell, to put in a request to have those, those teams put into place. But there are certain parameters that they set for us, for us to have a team start up. First and foremost would be, is there enough interest in participation? And second would be, is there facility and are there facility options? And so it really does come back to the building principal to really drive that, but in partnership with the folks at the district. But in terms of the question about club funding, you know, from cheerleaders to, you know, the football team to whoever, there are a lot of different fundraising options that they do to take care of all the accessory costs that come with running an athletic program. And it could be anything from getting helmets repaired, which some of that comes from district funds, but there are some that comes from fundraising, all across the spectrum. And all of our high school principals understand how that process works. And so it really comes back to, again, and unfortunately, I wasn't there with, when this question was asked, but it really comes back to that group of parents with that interest and that group of students with that interest, working closely with the principal because all of the ability to create a program is there if there's interest, if we have student participation. If, you know, if we, if we want a golf team at Sumner, and that's the best example I can use, I have some students who are.
You want a golf team at any school?
Yes, or at any school. I can speak for Sumner, I'm the principal of Sumner. I have students who came to me with some interest. We're going to look into what it takes to start a golf team, if that means, you know, some funds from a district office, you know, through the athletic program, yes. But if there's a fundraising component, we'll work with the students at the site level to make sure that they can get what they need. And then we work with our athletic director, both at the building level and at the district level, to make sure that we follow through with everything that the state says that we need to qualify. So we start with those very basic things that the state requires, and then we move it back towards what we can afford. We go get what we can from the district that's available because there is an athletic budget, but anything that's a gap, we fill the gap. And that's where the fundraising comes from.
Good answer.
And I needed a little bit of clarification too. I'm glad you explained the three points because it was a concern about a check and balance. Because even if you have all those components and the principal says no, it's no, right? So where does that check and balance come into place where you may have the support, you may have the fundraiser, you may have the whatever, but that principal says no or someone says no? Is there any check and balances put into place to where students don't feel like their hands are tied and knows the final answer, but something that can help them with, per se, like you said, golf club, yeah, they could have done all this, but the principal still does not want to support it. Where do students go from there?
Well, every day that a principal can say yes is like Christmas to us too. And so we don't like to say no. And so what I would say from the check and balance perspective would be to follow back through, I guess, from, from the district level and back through with the principal, you know, what the concern is. I don't think there is any concern, when it comes to athletics, within reason, that we can't solve with the resources that we have. The district has done a tremendous job of funding our athletic programs, and I know that there's a lot of work that's going in place to make sure we can get even more support. But for the principal to say no, even if there's a lot of support and assuming that the facilities are there and assuming that the equipment won't, you know, bankrupt the system and all of those things, there's no reason they should say no.
Well, I'm saying that's what the original concern that we're going back to saying.
Then that's real.
This is what I'm saying. And from that, we said, there should be something in place to, if that occurs, what, what, what allows the student to take it further? Because in the community, it was all the board. We had no clue that this happened, but the board didn't approve it. Okay? So I'm just trying to follow up. And sure, we want yes, but just going back to that check and balance piece of balancing out community concerns, balancing out what's reality, a check and balance put into place to make sure that when we do another listening tour coming up, that we won't have these concerns.
Well, I'll tell you, from the principal level, the check and balance was Mr. Thompson when he was the athletic director. If there was a concern, if there was a question as the principal or as a parent, I would go to Mr. Thompson and we would talk about what's possible. You know, you go through the listening tour notes and you see a lot of things about Sumner needs this and Sumner needs that. When, when I saw those notes, I contacted Mr. Thompson and then Mr. Criswell, and we had conversations in that manner. And so I think it would be important for us to make sure that our parents understand, you know, and we had, you know, Mr. Thompson moved to a different position and Mr. Criswell kind of assumed the position, making sure that our parents had a direct pathway to Mr. Criswell so they could ask questions to him when it comes to these specific athletic components. Because there are things about rules and regs that, that, you know, as a principal, I can say, ah, that's not a big deal. But, you know, we may be violating some policy, which is why he's in the position that he's in, but he should be the check and balance. Okay, thank you.
And what that means is, as we prepare our report, we need to know that process and hold ourselves as well as you because we're the ones that always, I mean, all kinds of strange things. We didn't approve the sun today, really. And I'm saying, and then the board canceled Monday, or, you know, something like that, something really stupid and wrong. There's on the finance, which we probably will come back to visit you on some of those. There is an HR response that we probably do not have time today to go through. And my, my cursor does not enlarge enough to read, so someone can respond briefly, do whatever that's supposed to say. I'm telling you.
If you go to the notes at the bottom and you copy and you can paste it in, and then you can enlarge it so that you can read it.
Oh, thank you.
And I would also say that a lot of these questions, I think, are probably things that we can just post out on our website underneath, you know, frequently asked questions. So it looks like, I mean, like they're asking for, what's our certification or licensure process? What's our hiring process? These are all things that we can list, and we're actually in the process of doing right now with Melissa, putting our piece together for the district website. We'll have a lot of this stuff on there. So that will shortcut some of these questions, I think. Unless there's a real concern about something very specific, the rest of it looked a lot like process-type things, like how do you do this? And those are things that we can list out there. Those are very easy things for us to put out there for people to look at all the time.
And your timeline to doing that is when?
We're doing it right now, so we'll have it done next week.
Okay, so we'll have a copy of that?
Yeah, whatever you, yeah. We can tell you what the site's going to look like. Melissa, do you think that's a fair thing to say? We're going to put our site together, give it to her, and then that.
Whether it gets on the website or not, you can give it to the board, and we'll reserve the right to come back and visit with you on this.
And also, I think that we addressed a lot of these concerns when we hired the consultant to come in.
This will be ongoing.
Due to the inconsistencies.
Right.
So that's why.
You'll have a report for us on that, yeah. Okay.
So thank you, and we will, we will come back to some of these later. Excuse me. The next one says.
Police department.
Uh-huh. Sergeant?
Do you have to read?
I don't have any.
Do you have your x-ray gun with you?
I know what I'm responding to.
Okay.
Kim's got it. Do you want to see it? You need to see it?
I'll refer to the chair. I think the question was specifically at Harmon or something like that about security concerns or tasers or.
Yeah, the tasers get through metal detectors. This should raise a red flag.
So metal detectors are just one of many phases of security measures in schools. So it is a, all, several different types of approaches to this. So the best thing to phrase it, and that's why I kind of worded the way I did here for you all kind of responses, metal detectors and x-ray machines are just two of several phases. And that starts with everybody in our building, from our custodians all the way up to our principals and including our police officers. So specifically, some of the things the board has worked on is they've approved of last year, they approved in the bond issue with secured entrances. Moving forward, they also, we received the $235,000 grant out of the state of Kansas that you matched money with, that is actually augmenting more security measures with our cameras and our secured entrances. Along with that, obviously, it starts first line with our school climate, our culture, and that's set by our principals, our building managers. We are working closely with finance. We are working closely with finance and purchasing right now at moving forward with a program to implement and phase out antiquated x-ray machines and metal detectors. So far, I don't have the actual number, but I do know the number of machines we've replaced as of last year going into this year, we replaced seven metal, I mean, seven x-ray machines and 15 metal detectors. That's with bomb approval, I mean, with board approval, I apologize. So moving forward, the main thing is that we are going to now start working on the standards set up, there are several of them, from the Safe and Secure Senate Bill 109. We need to parallel with that with our school district. So it's my job as the chief, and the job of all of our building managers and directors above, that we'll be working on those guidelines to make sure those are set in place. And that's very ubiquitous through the school, that involves student services, it involves the plan that you all put in place with your social workers, so it involves that as well, if that makes sense.
Yes, we realize security means more than tasers. Questions, comments?
Gee, this might be a crazy question, but are all tasers metal?
No. Tasers are very complicated items, because the way they commercialize them nowadays, you can buy them for $10, they look like flashlights, they're like cell phones, and they're very hard to detect in our scanners and x-ray machines. But what we do is, when we have one, we actually go back onto an intel that we share with all school districts and all the law enforcement agencies, we'll take the comparable, and we'll look at that. They look very different when you compare it to a cellphone, but when you're monitoring a thousand kids, it's very easy to overlook that, if that makes sense to you.
Taser?
Thank you.
I have a question, it's not about tasers. Have we, do we have enough security guards? Like, if we lose someone, have we replaced all the individuals that, for example, there was a loss at Windhat, I think, the security guard, I don't know if it was last year or the year before.
So the police officers, right now, I think we have four open positions, and those four open positions also include a sergeant's position, that we've just worked with HR, and just, we just changed the job description, so we can promote from internally. You've got to remember, we always got backup, and remember, our police department only is established since 2014, so we're very new within your district as we're moving forward. So we're always ongoing. Hiring of police officers throughout the state of Kansas, throughout the country, is very light. I'll just give you a quick comparison, even the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department right now, they're 31 members short. It's actually talked, they're actually having conversations at the commission level of looking at dropping the residency issue, because they cannot hire. It's very, it's very strenuous right now. So the hiring that we're having with teachers, we're also having that in a small number with police officers. My job is to continue to recruit, we actually got brought on a new recruiter in HR, it's kind of law enforcement specific as well, so that's what we're good at for us.
Is there a residency requirement for us?
No, ma'am. That's actually a big plus for us.
So do you have an idea when you may be able, I know you said it's tough, but how long it would take to-
I'm always getting applications, and so I know I have three on my desk that we're looking at right now. We had two just before a holiday break that we called in, we actually offered two positions, they turned us down because they were getting paid more money elsewhere. So it is an ongoing process with us. And do we need more? As your chief always tell, we'll need more.
Right.
But realistically, can we fund it? That's a big conversation we have to have outside of this meeting.
And we will.
Yes, ma'am.
As we go to look at the budget, we are concerned that as we shift 400 students to this site and 200 to that site, you have one security guard who then shares-
That's correct.
-another facility. So we are going to have that conversation.
Huge conversation we need to have.
Yeah, we are. And we anticipate looking to find resources to add and recognize that, that, that. How about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll have more conversation. Thank you, sir.
Computer? Thank you.
Next is a, Chalid, please. Good afternoon.
So first up was gifted education. The concern was that elementary services are more engaging, with middle school being a little less engaging and high school services being non-existent. So that's the perception. And in actuality, how it looks is, at the elementary level, across, as you know, 30 buildings, we have a service delivery model where we do bring all of the students who are identified as gifted to one location for a project-based learning, and we do that every other week. So it looks more engaging because it's more direct. So they are with their same peers, ability peers, and so they have that opportunity to be engaged in learning, working on IEP goals. At the middle school level now, we only have eight sites, we no longer pull the students to one location like we do at the elementary level. The services are provided in the buildings, and it's on a continuum. So some students have accommodations, modifications, to extend their learning in the general education classroom, and then they get some direct services. We're always in that push and pull as we start looking at credits, that content instruction that they may be missing if they are pulled to a special ed classroom and receive direct services from the gifted teacher. So I'm hoping that that's kind of what they're talking about when they're talking about what it looks like from an engaging point. It goes from more direct services at the elementary level, and then as the curriculum becomes more differentiated through high school, that students who are identified as gifted then can self-select out classes that are more challenging, more rigorous, more defined for their particular interests. Doesn't mean that we don't have a gifted teacher who serves the four high schools, but they are diverse, right? We're talking about four high schools with maybe 10 students each, because the bulk of our students who are identified as gifted are at Sumner. So we have one full-time gifted teacher at Sumner. So we have the challenges of, what are we doing when we're providing gifted services at the high school level? They acknowledge that as a gifted team, and they're working on making sure that we are providing differentiated services, both direct and indirect, at the high school level. But I delineated kind of those challenges that we see, and I wanted to construct it as engaging could be perceived as more direct services to students identified as gifted. Doesn't mean there's not a gifted teacher working with the general education teachers at the high school level to broaden those assignments, extend those assignments, make that learning more deep, instead of just, oh, here's more work for you to do. And trying to engage that in the general education setting, rather than pulling them out and having them miss instruction.
So I have a question, and I'm not sure if we do it at the gifted, this is in reference to the gifted at the high school, middle school level. So at the high school, would it be appropriate, and I'm going to assume, because this is a federal program, that we follow federal guidelines, by clustering the kids? And so let's say you have five or 10 high schoolers, and let's say they're all ninth graders, to make it easy. And let's say that we have them in honors English one, and they're just in the honors English one, in addition to nine other kids who are in honors English one, or, you know, 12 other kids who are in there, and they're receiving services through the honors English, and they have honors math through that course, and honors history, and that way it's recovered, is that what we're doing, or are we actually pulling kids out of the classroom and doing a separate setting?
It's both. So it depends on, really, the individual needs of the students, but by and large, at the high school level, what we are doing is providing services in that general education classroom.
So what I would like for us to do is take a look around the nation, to see what they're doing at the secondary level to support our gifted students, because oftentimes, when the kids are saying they don't want to do it, kids don't want to be singled out at that time. It's fun when you're in elementary school, but when they get to high school, it's like, oh my, I don't, please don't, ma'am, please don't touch me, I don't know, no. But if you're in the class and everyone knows, then they don't, no one knows that you are gifted and talented or those things, so, and then you're not actually pulling them away from instruction that is actually required, because you can render those services, it's almost like a co-teaching model.
Exactly.
But if we have to have teachers who are certified or have an additional certification, maybe we can look at and see, and how can we get that endorsement added to them? That's at the secondary level. At the middle schools, doing some of the same things where, I hate to use the word track, but you have that group of students who are following one another, I think-
And we do that. We are very strategic at the middle school level. We have one teacher per four middle schools, and it is primarily in a co-top model. And so for some of those students who are identified as gifted, they see that as, maybe that doesn't appear to be a service to them. It's not, it's not like, I used to go with that gifted teacher, I know she's my gifted teacher, and I went, and I did fun things with all of my gifted peers. So I think that that may be kind of the perception problem as well, that the students don't feel because the service is less direct. Diploma Plus has been a big asset for students identified as gifted with the early college opportunities, the abilities to do internships, et cetera, so they can extend their learning in a whole host of ways that are not, I've got to meet with the gifted teacher.
Dr. Yeager?
Statistics show that minority students are less identified as gifted, although they are gifted. There are a couple of parent concerns who indicated their students scored very high, however, gifted services was not offered. This goes back to, if we recognize that students are tested very high, as a person who has a child who has tested very high, I had to advocate for them to get tested for gifted. It's seen, it's shown, it's recognized by the teacher, but that advocacy piece of those who we are missing is still, I feel, not being addressed, or it could be. So can you clarify how we can better identify those gifted students who are testing high, they're still sitting in that classroom, but on our tour, we found out as well, they're given extra assignments because they're smart, or they're told, oh, help such and such in the classroom, but they are not given the opportunity, because they, parents don't know, to get tested for gifted or identified as gifted?
So there are kind of three points of referral. So it could be the gen ed teacher who identifies this child has needs beyond what I can provide in general education. So they, there are those kids who could score high, but don't demonstrate a need for that specialized instruction. So that's what kind of draws the line for the provision of special ed services. So you've got a gen ed teacher who could identify a need, a parent could identify the need, and we also have six gifted teachers serving our 30 elementary schools. So they are in a school every week, so they have one day a week devoted to each school. So they're there, and they are to be looking at scores, maps, whatever kind of evaluation information is out there, talking to teachers. They establish some challenger groups for students who are identified as, you know, achieving very high, so that they can gather additional data if data is missing. We have this student improvement team process that need to be followed for students who potentially are gifted, students who potentially have a disability. So that, that plan has to be in place for what are those accommodations and modifications that we are providing in general education? Because to qualify for special ed, you have to need something above and beyond what can be provided in gen ed. And unfortunately, it is, as you said, there is kind of that fallback position of, oh, I'll give you more, or I'll have you help. So that's not what we're looking for. We want to deepen that, the students' learning, should they be identified as eligible. We have a matrix, so in several districts, the, it's a cognitive and an achievement-only. So 97th percentile on a cog assessment, 95th percentile on academic achievement. So then you're eligible. But we look at creativity as well. So we're looking at a broader range, and it's on a scale, so it's not all or nothing. Either you got a 97th percentile on the cog, and a 95th, or you didn't, and so you don't qualify.
Right, but those are still based upon the person looking. So if the person felt, oh, well, I don't feel this person deserves it, and not saying that, that there's no bias, but we all know people have biases. If that person felt, oh, they scored well, but I don't want this person to achieve, that's where we could maybe find more. But I would love to see currently how many gifted students that we have per grade in the district at the school, because when I asked this question to one of the people I spoke with, they said, oh, we don't have many from kindergarten to second grade because of the third grade test. And I said, hmm, it's interesting, because my friend in a different district has plenty of students they have identified as gifted, as early as kindergarten and first grade. So where are we missing the mark to serve all students to their fullest capacity? Because statistics show every year that students who are above that capacity and are very smart, achieving, et cetera, they can fall into depression or lower their self-esteem because they're not being challenged. So I just want to make sure that we, as a district, are able to serve parents who may not know. Because quite honestly, if you ask a parent, hey, how's your child doing? Oh, they're doing great, they always score very high. Have you talked about gifted? Well, isn't that for special needs students? Isn't that for, so there may not be that knowledge that the gifted program exists for students who are, they may not know.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. So communication and awareness, we just recently, recently, the past five years, kind of doubled the number of gifted teachers at the elementary level to promote that in each building, because we identified, there were some elementary schools, there still are, some elementary schools who have no students identified as gifted. So that was the purpose of having the gifted teachers in those buildings, either running challenger groups, just promoting awareness, and what to look for when you see a child, you know, who you think might be gifted. Here are some characteristics. So it is just continuing to broaden that awareness and communication, honestly. And we do have a webpage on the district website for Quest, which is the gifted services. And so they state their mission, their vision, and kind of characteristics of gifted learners, that kind of thing. So there is another access point for additional information. But yeah, it takes all of us to, like you said, overrule kind of that bias that may be underlying.
And I guess that, that can fold into my generic question, and by now you know I'm kind of a structured person. So is there, at those kindergarten, first and second, no screening?
No, we do not do any gifted screening.
Okay. So that's one idea. And secondly, where are your gifted teachers?
Where?
Yes, where?
Well, they're itinerant. So we have six at the elementary level, so they have five buildings each. So they just go from building to building. And then we have two at the middle school level, so they have four and four.
So that in itself may explain why they're not able, well, they miss some kids, this for, I'm trying-
Potentially, potentially, but there's a lot, right? So we have school psychs in the buildings and social workers, we have lots of eyes on kids who could be a referral agent.
And do counselors screen for that?
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
Identify, maybe I don't like the word screen.
No, I'm good with it.
That's going exactly going into my next question, but-
I'm trying to figure out who to screen, yeah. So who does the screening? So maybe it's the school psych. And the gifted teachers love this idea, by the way. They have been talking about wanting a gifted screener. So it's not something that people are opposed to, it's been more of a who.
Conversation. How long's that conversation been going on?
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm now going to reference the Orton-Gillingham approach, because that has, that was raised last year with this dyslexia task force, and I have to apologize, I have not read the report. Have you a copy of it?
I do, right here.
And are we, I mean, I, much of the recommendation will probably go into legislation, but what's- But what's your, your, your comment here says that the district is currently, currently researching training, not training, but researching training.
Yes, so we, there's a contract out. Mr. Carell and Mr. Goheen have that contract currently in their hands. It's about a $30,000 contract to provide the training. So once that contract comes through, we're looking to put it through board for approval. And the training could take place in March pending board approval.
Okay, and while screening for dyslexia is not the law yet, what, and estimates suggest that one in four, one in five students have this, this challenge. How many, you know, are those numbers, what are our numbers?
Those numbers could, so there's, dyslexia does not equal special education. So I liken this to attention deficit hyperactivity disorder from years ago, where dyslexia can, is prevalent based on their numbers. So these are kids who are struggling to read. So it could necessitate a need for specialized instruction, which is what special education is. It could be a 504 plan for accommodations and modifications, doesn't rise to the level of need for specialized instruction. So currently, we, our LD numbers probably are around 1,600 students K to 12 identified as having a learning disability. The bulk of those have been in reading, which is how dyslexia gets translated into federal law under IDEA. So I think the numbers are fairly accurate. We, we know that we have kids in our classrooms who are struggling to learn to read, identified for special education or not. So yeah, their recommendations come out for kind of the level one screening, the level two. I will tell you for level two, those are all techniques, tools that the school psychologists currently use to identify students with reading difficulties.
And Dr. Faust, we probably will need us to have a copy of that report. I think it was issued this week?
This week, yeah.
This week? And, and probably legis, there will be, is there any recommended, recommended legislation in that report?
No, so this was, I don't know what the next step is. You would know that way better than I. So yeah, this just says chairs draft recommendations.
Okay, the short version is that there were a group of parents ready to force required screening. And I don't believe they, they may have identified this approach by name. I can't remember. But that, that was a stopgap. That, let's study it for a year and, and we all know studies are stopgaps. Leadership didn't want to do it, but couldn't stop the tide, so they stuck their finger in the dike. But right now, the finger's out. So I, I can't predict, but I, I would put your money on. There'd probably be some legislation, something coming out of, out of that, either encouragement recommending or something like that, so.
And what's, what they identify is really the lack of education and training for pre-service teachers, special education or general education teachers in the instruction of reading. Using evidence-based practices to teach reading is a huge hole in our current pre-service training programs. And I believe the parent comment was very specific. Special education is understaffed and not trained to teach students with dyslexia. And this is no mystery to you. We currently have 60 teachers teaching special education on a waiver. So that means they're general education licensed and so they are taking classes as they're teaching our students with disabilities. Not to mention the continued 15 teaching vacancies that we have in special education. And then, I don't have this data, but how many of our teachers are first and second, third year teachers? So I have no, I have no response for that, only to agree with it.
And, and our response can only be resources need to be dedicated to some aspect of remedy. And that the last, which, which will be dealt with because no one ignores federal law, special ed has not been funded until the 92 percentile, averaging about 86. But this, that too came out as a, as a post audit and, and we will have to address that. I mean, it hasn't been funded forever.
Yeah, ever since the law was enacted.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So Dr. Faust, those are issues we, and board, we will have to revisit that. Student Services, she's ready. She must want to go home.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to lighten it up, folks. It's pretty heavy.
I just wanted to keep the time and be ready when you're ready for me. And so this response is, we've had an opportunity to be before you since the listening tour. We have presented our trauma sensitive and resilient school initiative and our timeline and our proposal. We also were before you the last board meeting with our behavioral health coordinator to speak to you about our behavioral health teams that include both our counselors and our behavioral health social workers. And then, once we're done with listening to our responses, Octavio will be presenting a proposal, a tentative proposal about alternative education options, which speaks to some of the concerns that were listed here about out of school suspensions. And so he will be presenting that here shortly. And I didn't know if you had any other questions about the comments or anything else I could answer.
Well, first, thank you for those reports that we surely will reference. This week, I don't know if you were up to the Capitol, but there was a special, um, public event addressing social and emotional behavior and the role of, and we will visit mental health because the pilot, the funding we got was just a pilot for, I think, 10 or 11?
For the 11 positions.
11 positions.
Angela's been speaking at Topeka, so.
Okay, so, so again, board, that's a budget issue. We're going to have to, to.
Yes.
Because no one can deny that that is not a component, that one is crucial to student achievement, but two, it is a component in the new school accreditation. So we, whether we like it or not, we're going to have to address that. Other comments?
Thank you.
She got off easy.
Wait, wait, I, I got a question.
We see her once a week.
No, I, I just wanted to thank you again. I know sometimes we get accused of not. Thinking, but I appreciate a lot what you did. There was a situation and our department did an excellent job and I just want to say it again because I was worried about the little guy. I didn't want him to hurt himself. And we stepped up and I think it was good that, in addition to those 10 social workers, the ones that we added, and there were those who went against us and thought we were off track, but that, our babies need some help and, and our parents need some help. And we just want to thank you guys for what you did.
Well, I appreciate it.
It means a lot.
Board for the commitment to supporting the work. Thank you.
Trauma is a real factor for our society, but, but our community as well. And, and, and Ms. Wanda Brown Lee Page did not mean she didn't thank everybody else.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, thank you.
We thank everybody. Go. You going to say something? Oh. Last, summer school responses.
I will speak to that one because Mr. Garrison isn't here, but it, the request was to expand, you know, summer school opportunities and we actually are in the process of planning for the summer school programs right now. One opportunity for us to expand them actually is a partnership with the community college. And I know that Mr. Garrison is working with some contacts over to, over at the community college so that we can provide some services for students at that location too. So typically, we've done a credit recovery at the high school. We have done some remedial support in math and reading at the middle school and the same at the elementary schools. Some things that we have to work around typically are some of our construction schedule. But Mr. Garrison does a really good job of coordinating with Mr. Clements around offering those supports for our students. What they will be in the process of doing in the next few weeks is identifying the specific criteria for the students that will be eligible for those summer school supports. And I know that Mr. Garrison will work with Mr. King to help develop the actual curriculum and the program for the summer to support our students. I know that because of some of our audit information that came back, they're going to have to explore some different revenue sources to support that this summer because some of the dollars that we had planned for that, we lost them frankly. But I know that there are some potential options that we can explore from the state to support some summer programs. So we will have summer programs to support our students in need and look to expand that by partnering with the college this summer.
And the board recognizes that budget constraints always, there are always budget constraints that we have to work around.
I have a question. And I'm not crazy. I know, can we charge a minimal fee? Is that a bad thing?
You know, actually, at the high school level, we do charge. We have charged $100 fee because frankly, at the high school level, they are trying to make up credits. And so that is something that we have charged. I have to defer to Ms. Woodbury to see what our collection rate has been. The reality is, you know, we have to find a good balance. What's a balance that doesn't make it impossible for someone to do it? But I, I think the good thing about charging, particularly at the high school level, is that puts some skin in the game, so to speak. That when they have to come up with some money, that they're making, they want to get their money's worth, so to speak. So we, it's, we have charged for a high school credit recovery.
Sorry, the only question that I would raise from that one is that at the high school, when we're doing credit recovery, that's going towards their graduation? So we're wanting to help them, so if they don't have the money to do it, then that puts us, that sets us back for the graduation rate, which then puts a tally against us for not graduating those specific students with their four-year cohort.
And we typically have offered some kind of scholarship opportunities for those that cannot pay or have not been able to pay. But it, it's kind of a balancing act to try to navigate both of that. But it is something the board could consider in terms of policy if they wanted to implement a fee for it.
And there's always thinking outside the box of scholarships. Maybe some of our, our business partners who are, are making millions off of the community, of which the community is paying, there, there could be ways to, to be creative. We just haven't been tasked, had that task. First, thank you, everybody, for tolerating and being patient with us as we go through this because we feel it's, we must respond to the community because that's what we said, we would reply. We are not on schedule, so we do apologize for taking your time. But can we take 10 minutes and we come back? Next item is the alternative school. So it's 204 now, 215. That's 10 minutes, 11 actually. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're at item number seven. And again, we appreciate your consideration for the time. We will, we, we have to be thorough, but we will recognize and respect your time. And we also recognize publicly, we're not, it's not 1 o'clock, it's actually 216. So proceed, sir.
Okay. Well, good afternoon and happy Saturday to everybody.
Happy Saturday.
It is a happy Saturday.
Madam President, Dr. Faust. For those of you who may not know, my name is Octavio Estrella. I'm the Assistant Director for Student Services. And I'd like, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here before you today, especially as you're starting to discuss your, your budget priorities. And really would like to, like, appreciate the opportunity to be able to share with you some work that we have been doing, some thinking that has gone into an inter, a pilot intervention program for students that have been recommended for long-term suspension or expulsion. We are calling this student, this program, the Restorative Education Program, or REP. The term restorative is a term that references a, a philosophy, a set of principles and processes that seeks to empower young people to take accountability and responsibility for their actions, especially in cases where they've, they've caused harm. And it, it, it looks to build greater respect for the, for individuals in the community as well as for themselves. But to also teach skills so that they can repair that harm and repair those, those relationships that may have been broken as a result of their, their behavior. REP is certainly aligned, the REP program is certainly aligned with the board's priority about, around safe and respectful learning environments, high expectations for student and student, and student achievement. For some time now in research circles, we've known, and it's become, and it's become quite apparent that suspension, and especially long-term suspension, has been a largely ineffective strategy to deter students from engaging in problem behavior. In fact, many studies have, have highlighted it, actually, especially a large study in Chicago Public Schools that found that long-term suspension in particular exacerbates students' apathy, their sense of anger, and it harms school bond, relationships within the school, school bonds. What we're hoping to do with, with Restorative Education Program is to restore that bond, restore, restore that trust by engaging students, but providing a personalized setting, one in which the emphasis is on social, emotional support as well as academic support in a student-centered environment. Our goal, sorry, I'm getting confused with the laptops. Our goal with the REP program is to enable students or help students to reintegrate into their home schools, to provide them the necessary skills to successfully reintegrate, but also reduce the likelihood that they will be suspended subsequent times. This, this pilot that we're looking to do is a one-year pilot. It, we're looking to do this pilot within the structure of our existing alternative high school program Fairfax Learning Center. It would be housed within that structure. We're looking to focus on, for this pilot year, we're looking to focus on 25 students who, high school students who have been recommended for long-term suspension or expulsion. This will be a 45 mandatory placement for these students. Provide, it will provide a full day of instruction, a full day of school for these students, as well as implement a restorative curriculum. And then continue support for students when they return to their home schools. And this is a critical step for us. This is a critical piece, especially we start looking at research on the efficacy of disciplinary alternative programs. So there's a very small body of research that looks at the efficacy of these programs. But one of the key features in all of those studies is this last point here, is that there must be a reintegration plan and process for students to return to their home school and there must be continued support as they reintegrate into their home schools. So how did we get here? How did we get to this point? It's, in part, it started by us looking closely, with the help of, of Mr. Rand, looking closely at our long-term suspensions and expulsions from last school year. And I'd like to share some of that information. Last school year, 2017, 2018, we saw 70 middle school or high school students who were recommended or were placed on extended suspension or expulsion. The top five offenses that students were suspended or expelled for was physical assault, fighting, intimidation or threatening weapons, inciting to fight. We'd like to break down this data a little bit further. This chart here provides a breakdown by grade level. Specifically, the largest group that were, since long-term suspended last school year were ninth graders. This is important in terms of thinking about what, what sort of academic consequences there are for ninth graders to be suspended. are for ninth graders to be suspended, or long-term suspended from school, in terms of their likelihood or odds of dropping out of school. This next chart breaks the data down even further to look at the comparison between students on special education who have been identified with special education services and students who have not. What's important to think about this is, for students who have an IEP, who are receiving special education services, they still receive those services while they're on long-term suspension or expulsion. The students who are not on, who don't have an IEP, for a large part, do not receive any educational services while they're on suspension. And that, and this is the gap that we're trying to address with the REP program, is providing those critical services for students who have been long-term suspended or expelled. We also looked at the breakdown by race and ethnicity. What we know is that approximately 27% of our student population are African-American students. In terms of long-term suspension or expulsion, they made up over 50% of long-term suspension or expulsions last school year. Right behind them, we had Latino students who were, who were, made up 36%, roughly 37% of expulsions and suspensions last school year. So, this is, may not be a surprise to many, but majority of the students who were long-term suspended or expelled were males, but there was a growing number of young females who were long-term suspended and expelled last school year. So, what we also did is we looked, we tried to compare first semester, fall 2017 to 2018 first semester. We just finished our fall semester 2018. Last year, last fall of 2017, we had 26 long-term suspensions and expulsions. Already, this, at the end of this last fall semester, we were at 43 long-term suspensions I'd like to take a little time to talk about what are the long-term consequences with regard to both academic and social consequences for long-term suspension or expulsion. What we know from last year is we knew, on average, long-term suspension and expulsion resulted on average of 52 instructional days lost. Now, that's a significant impact on achievement, on the, both in math and reading, in terms of the scores. We also saw a significant number of students who were subsequently suspended, who, there was a, that's one thing that we're looking at, is what has been the recidivism rate, the students who come back from being long-term suspended? That's a critical question that we're looking into. And then, in terms of our ultimate goal, in terms of graduating students and preparing them to enroll in post-secondary education, we know that being suspended at the ninth grade, especially for those 31 students that I just spoke about, we know that for them, it's, it almost doubles the odds that they will graduate, that they will drop out of high school and will not enroll in post-secondary education. There's also direct link to some social consequences, and many have probably have heard the terminology, school-to-prison pipeline, and that is something that many have looked into, have researched extensively. And there was a national longitudinal study performed a few years ago that looked at youth in their mid, early, their early twenties and mid twenties, and they found some staggering connections with suspension and involvement in the criminal justice system. In particular, this study found that among black youth who were suspended 10 or more days, 52% were arrested three or more times by the time they were 20. 38% had been sentenced to detention and juvenile or adult correction facility as a result of, not a result, by the time they were in their twenties. So, part of the work that we have done is began to reach out nationally to look at programs at other large school districts, not just large districts, but mid-sized districts like Baltimore, Oakland Unified School Districts. And we know that as far as programs that we're proposing to do, the kind of program that we're supposed to do, we're not having to recreate the wheel. There are some practices that we can tap into, there, that we can learn from in terms of how we design this program. We know from what our research has looked at is, it really matters how, while designed and while implemented the program is. So, really putting emphasis on the implementation of this program. We know that small class, that personalized setting is really important in terms of the small class size. Dedicated instructional and behavioral staff, so these are staff that want to work with this population, that have dedicated themselves to working with this population, and have been trained, and receive extensive training to be able to work in these types of settings. There's been, many of these programs have a strong social-emotional curriculum that they, that they implement on a daily basis, and is part of their instructional, is part of that school day for these students. Another key feature of these model programs has been that individualized support. And I, like I said at the beginning, that support, that support in terms of returning to their school, having a transition plan that is written and agreed upon by both, by everybody involved in the student's lives, including their parents, social workers, and that there is a clear connection to the home school, that somebody from the home school is connected to that transition plan, and that somebody's following up with that student as they're transitioning back to their home school. So, what we've done so far is we've had preliminary discussions with our partners, with Greenbush, who currently runs our Fairfax Learning Center Alternative High School. And we've been in partnership with Greenbush for 15 years, and it's been a partnership that's been a work in progress. And over the years, we've had, we've been able to have very good collaboration with Greenbush, specifically in our, in reforming the culture and climate of Fairfax Learning Center. The last three years have been, have been really turnaround years for that program. There's been a drastic reduction in disciplinary infractions, almost, I think the last time we were before you, we reported there were no fights that particular school year. In a large part, that has to do with their implementation of a school-wide restorative model. How they address discipline, how they address conflict in that setting has been key to that turnaround of that culture and climate at that school. And that turnaround has resulted in an increased graduation rate, going from 2015 to just 13 graduates to the following year, having close to 30 graduates. So, that's been, that's been a key piece to that. Across the state, we know that Greenbush provides a lot of the technical assistance and capacity building for social-emotional learning. They're a organization that works statewide and has done considerable amount of work with social-emotional learning. And because of their relationship, we believe that there's an opportunity there for us to design a program and to utilize both district resources. He's not here today, he just left, but Shannon Demery has been, our coordinator for social-emotional learning, has been a key in developing our district's capacity around social-emotional learning, and has done a lot of work around building a curriculum for social-emotional And as I said before, this, if we're implementing this pilot program within the structure of Fairfax Learning Center will be key in terms of being able to just be in the same building and be, and be able to be in that same environment. So, I spoke to you about that we've started this discussion with Greenbush to, one, gauge their interest in partnering with us on establishing and launching this partnership, this pilot Board, you may recall that late last school year, you approved an addendum to their curriculum, to their MOU that expanded the number of seats from 75 to 100, adding initial 25 seats to that program. You may know or may not know that that was not, because of the timing of that addendum, it didn't provide enough time for Greenbush to hire the necessary teachers to expand to the 25 students. And so, that piece of, that addendum was not able to be met in terms of, there wasn't, we didn't have the opportunity to really hire teachers, three teachers, I think it was called for at that time. So, what we're proposing is to reintroduce that expansion of those 25 seats and utilize those 25 seats as the structure for this intervention program. What's really critical is that we seek, that we finalize our MOU and our budget with Greenbush, that we bring that before the board as early as possible, so that we can hopefully gain that approval and move forward with hiring and designing the program and putting the people, necessary people in place, so that we can launch the program in the What's key, one challenge that we have currently is with our facility. Quite frankly, our current facility, if we expand to 100 students, is not really adequate to accommodate 100 students, to be quite honest. And we're looking, I've been working with Mrs. Miller and Mr. Clemens to help try to identify some future sites for our alternative programs, because that's a critical need and it's been a challenge for us over the last few years. And then, you may recall that, in terms of my early slides, I presented data on both middle school and high school. And that is because our plan is that based on what we learned from this school year, the successes we experienced from this pilot program, we hope to expand that to be able to include middle school students as well in the program. So, that's, that's our plan moving forward, is to eventually expand this program to also be able to service middle school students as well. What we're looking for in terms of program staffing, you may recall that, sorry. Greenbush's plan called for that 25 expansion, 25-seat expansion, it called for an administrative position, so someone that would almost serve in an assistant principal position, because now when you've expanded from 75 students to 100 students, and consider, these are 100 students of our, considered to be one of, some of our most at-risk students in the district, that you really need that additional administrative position. And then, adding two teachers and a paraprofessional, based on what we feel are the critical needs of these students that we place in the restorative education program, we are asking that, or we are proposing that we add an additional social worker to that building. Currently, Fairfax Learning Center does not have a social worker, it's not part of that plan for social workers in the district, and an additional position, a program specialist position, that would primarily be working on students' transition plans to their home schools. So, it would be a position that would push out and into schools and really work to support those transition plans in the high schools with these students.
Let me ask you a question. During graduation last year, they graduated a large number of students. I was quite proud of them. So, had they started implementing the program slowly then?
This program? No. This is, this is a new, this would be a new program.
I mean, they did an wonderful job last year.
So, the restorative justice program they have, but in terms of a program for long-term susp, for students who have been long-term suspended or expelled, that has not happened.
Okay.
That's what we're proposing, that's what I'm presenting today on. So, this is an estimate, just based on some, they've, Greenbush has provided some estimated costs in terms of what that staffing would look like. What you have here in front of you is, in terms of the staff that Greenbush would hire, the two positions that we would, that would be part of, that would be district employees, the costs related to transporting additional 42 students, and then, at the bottom there, you have an estimated staffing and transportation budget of $391,000. Other costs that we need to take into consideration is the cost around professional development, the setup costs. If we're, we'd be taking some spaces over in that, in that building that currently are not classrooms, and that we would need to bring up to, up to classroom standards, substitute pay, instructional supplies and curriculum, and nutritional services. So, as I close, I just want to, again, reiterate that this is a, this is a population that in large part has been overlooked, and if, my belief is that if we want to impact both the safety and security of our buildings, impact, continue to rebuild that trust and school bonds with students, that this is, this is an important step for the district. And with that, thank you.
Questions?
I have a question. Let me get back to my screen. So, your pilot program, at what point do parents get involved in that program?
So, that's, that's a critical piece, I think, I regret leaving that out, but I think all throughout the process, parents are a critical piece, especially at the beginning, when a student is inducted into the program, they're brought into the program, a parent should be a part of that process, understanding what the expectations are as students are in this program, but also being able to be engaged throughout the 45 days, and then, as a student prepares to transition back to their home school, they're a key part of that process as well.
Right, right, right. What kind of recidivism rate? I mean, once a student's on long-term suspension, or how many times do you get a student that returns, that recidiv, goes back onto?
So, I don't have the answer for that at this moment. That's one thing that we're looking to go back to and look at some, at these students, our 70 students from last year, and then our 43 from this year, is really looking at how many of them, when they return to school, either commit additional code of conduct infractions and get suspended? That's something I, but I think, just looking at national research, that I think that that recidivism is pretty, pretty high.
I got you, got you. What does the restorative justice curriculum look like? What's that?
So, it's really, it really opens itself up to character development, lessons around understanding, respect, responsibility. It's, it looks at morning routines, how you open the day, how you end the day with students. It incorporates circles, talking circles, and a lot of that is, has to do with processing, how students, really some of the trauma that students have, are experiencing. So, that's why it's important to have that social worker be a part of that process. But it's really a pretty iterative process, it's pretty intense.
I got you. Did I hear you correctly when you said that a student on long-term suspension with, that has an IEP still gets those associated services?
Yes, that's correct.
How does that happen?
It's law. They have to continue to receive services while they're on suspension.
I see.
We have a, we're upstairs over at FLC, and we have two special education teachers, as well as a para, and students are best over there. as well as a para, and students are best over there to receive special ed services and progress in the general education curriculum.
I understand you right, that we approved the expansion of twenty-five to a hundred, too late in the year to implement it last year. So we only have seventy-five students at Fairfax, not a hundred?
Right now, we currently have seventy-eight, seventy-eight students. I mean, our contract was seventy-five with Green Bush, but we've added an additional three students, but we're not serving the hundred students that.
Right.
And I think part of that has to do with, I mean, had to do with the timing of the, I think it was, the amendment was approved in June sometime, and then, we had to be able to hire somebody by August first. It was a contingency in there about hiring somebody by August first, hiring those additional teaching positions, and that was not possible.
So, if we accept this and vote on it, how many total students will we serve at Fairfax next year? A hundred or seventy?
A hundred.
A hundred. Seventy-five will be in the regular program, twenty-five?
In the pilot.
The pilot program, okay.
Okay, I need a clarification. So, you said the rate of suspension almost doubled this fall. What was the change? Have you been able to analyze the difference?
We have. In terms of looking at what are the offenses that students are being expelled or long-term suspended for, some of them are new infractions that are, have been, I would say, a result of some policy decisions, you know, some unintended consequences of moving some fractions to class four. For example, school threat, bomb threat, last, previous year was considered a class three, this year is a class four.
Okay. And then what's the current capacity for the building?
Current capacity, I don't know what that would be. Doug, would you know?
For the entire building, I believe, we have a couple of classrooms on the second floor, I think there are people up there, is that right?
Yes.
So I'm trying to understand how, if we don't know the capacity, how we're looking for a new area? Because if we're going to expand capacity, we should know what we currently have and be able to compare to find something.
So, can I answer two of those questions? One, with the twenty-five students, so they would only be there forty-five days, so we'd actually serve more than, only twenty-five at one given time, so that it would be revolved, so it wouldn't be the same students. There may be, you know, they'd be going in and out at different times. As far as the capacity, the reason why we needed to move on this is solely because we put our kids back in the building. So, they're suspended for ten days, they go back, and they do the same thing, they're back. So, we don't have a program to isolate it, fix it, work with it, and still provide instruction. So if a general ed student right now gets long-term suspended, they're at home, and they're not receiving any type of instruction. So we have to look at, what are we doing for our kids, what's best for our kids? The other part is that we are, there are schools that we're combining, so there are other buildings. So, when we're looking at other facilities, that's what they're talking about, what are we going to be doing with the buildings who will be vacant, those school buildings that are vacant, and what can we do to possibly put this program in that building if it's not already accounted for?
Okay, great. And so that leads me to my next one. So, we have twenty-five slots, but seventy, it could go in and out. Is the priority for the students who do not have services right now the priority slot? Or will it just be who's first, or is there, is there a structure for?
So our current high school, the current Fairfax Learning Center High School, they, the students who are there are students who are off track, who are severely credit deficient. So they're students who are not currently on suspension, they're there because they need to catch up on their credits, it's a south-paced program, so, so those are the students who are there now. The twenty-five would be students who were a result of being recommended for long-term suspension or expulsion, had gone through hearing. Those are the twenty-five slots that we're talking about.
So are we thinking that they won't, we won't max over twenty-five? Is that the thinking?
That's the challenge with your explanation, that not, it's not like a good crop, but the worst-case scenario, one hundred are suspended. So what do we do, long-term?
Right.
On Monday?
Well, hopefully not on Monday, but.
Hey, Friday.
So I think, one thing that we're working on now is a criteria, and making sure, so I think for us, one of the criterias is going to be is making sure that students have a behavior plan in place, that there's a sit plan in place for some of our students. I think that also being able to gauge the readiness of students to be in a program like this is going to be important in terms of, I think every situation is different, but in terms of being able to engage what level of responsibility they want to own up in terms of their involvement in, you know, in their involvement, so.
Yeah, you know, we support you, so let's get that out of the discussion. We thank you, but there's some little gaps that could, that we, you know, how do we prepare for it? Go ahead, Dr. Jaeger.
The last question I have is, if we are maxed to capacity and would have to turn a student away, have we looked at online alternatives to help continue to educate them, or what online components that they could possibly do themselves or their parents if that does happen?
So, we have our virtual learning program, Five Hundred Reach. The drawback of that is that students are not, don't have the opportunity to be, have that social-emotional component in that. So we provide the bare minimum in terms of providing them access to their online classes, but in terms of preparing them to come back to school, that social-emotional piece, that competency piece, is not there. And so, that's, that would be my concern with that. But, working with Green Bush at Fairfax Learning Center, that's one thing that they've been able to perfect, is that blended learning model, where they use both direct instruction and online learning in their program.
Well, I'm thinking, is there a component at the school? So we know this child has been on their, out for ten days. Welcome back to school. There's, is there any plan at the school to help them get reiterated back in, instead of relying on Green Bush? What do we have in our current capacity to help resolve some of that social-emotional on-ground now? Instead of just saying, oh, welcome back, go to your normal class, what can we do at, on-ground at our schools to help with that buffering?
I think there's a lot we can do. I think, working with, I think some schools may do this already, in terms of having that reintegration plan, either by having a student be in one place for a day, so to be able to catch up on some of their work. So, you know, recovery rooms.
Is that all schools or just some? Is it depending on what school they go to, or?
Let me interject, and if I'm incorrect, Dr. Strickland, please correct me. First of all, restorative justice is a program that is there. They use the counselors and the social workers, and I'm sure that they're in communication with Fairfax Learning Center. If they see a certain student who may be a candidate for you, whereas they can target, trying to change the behavior as well as communicating with parents, so that the student may not get to the point where they will have to go to Fairfax Learning Center. Along with that, by doing that, you're putting this child on the right path not to have to go to this facility, and that if the child ends up there, at least they will have a history of what this child has done, so that they can more or less plot a path for success to get them back into the high school. We saw that, I think when we were on our listening tour, a parent mentioned that her child was having some problems, had come through there and received great success and even graduated, and thought that the environment of high school was not appropriate, but coming there to your facility was the best thing for them. So it's in place. I think what we want to do is to make sure that this line of communication keeps going, because it's not just the child is messing up in high school and it automatically ends there. They are trying to make sure that those lines of communication is coming to the schools, to the parents, to the social workers, to the counselors, and even checking in with the students each day to make sure, not only in the high school, but at Fairfax Learning Center, so that they are on task, to be able to do what they need to do in order to gain success. It's like a whole village, that they are reaching out to try to help the child. And if we don't do that, yes, the child will have serious problems, but we want to continue to make sure that we implement a line of communication throughout the entire district, whether it's at middle school, high school, so that they can gain success and be able to graduate. Am I somewhat on track?
And I, but I think what we saw was the inconsistencies from school to school, where one school may be doing it great, the other school.
That's why we're trying to make sure this goes in place.
Yeah, yeah. So, is Dr. Tucker Neville's, is it happening in each school? Does each school have the same mechanism for doing the same thing, so, or each school can do whatever they choose to?
I think every school has the same idea that we need to do something, but how they carry it out, it's different. Most schools, I should, all the schools have a way to reintegrate our students into the flow after a long-term suspension. They have that in their heads, but how it happens is designed for that school.
So do we, is the goal to make it consistent?
With the restorative, the restorative justice practice, it's called restorative circle. And so they're trained, and then it's a group of individuals who help reintegrate the student back into the general ed population. But there's a series of approaches, so they're trained there, but they're also doing academic. But there is, when you do restorative justice, there's a training that they have to.
Right, because we went to the, because we went to the one school and they were clear that they were trying to do it, but it's not, but it wasn't being done.
Not all the schools have been trained in restorative justice.
Okay.
There's a process going on.
Part of what's going to happen.
Right.
Moving forward.
Right. Moving forward.
So the answer is K through twelve, not all K through twelve practices, or even knows about restorative justice. They know the term, but when you say it's in their head, it's scary, because it needs to be on the ground.
Well, I tell you what I mean by in their heads.
Please.
They want to make sure that being very thoughtful when our students return back to school, so they have a plan in place. So they are being very thoughtful and intentional. Not all those schools are trained in restorative justice, but they have a practice in place to reintegrate the students.
Okay.
So that's what I mean by it's in their mind. They know they need to do that, because going back into the regular classroom, cold turkey, will not be, will not work. They even have, some of the schools even have opportunities for parents to understand how to reintegrate. They devise different times of days for students to come in. They have something in place, it's just not consistent, the activities that they're doing, but everyone has the idea that we need to do something to reintegrate students back into school.
Now, maybe I've been misinformed or asked the wrong question. When students are suspended, unless they are on IEP, there's no homework, educational, commu?
When they are long-term suspended?
Only long-term, but I'm, just three days or two days.
I think for the, for the most part.
It hasn't been, that has not been the answer. And to be something optional is, goes back to this lack of consistency and student success.
When I say optional, I mean, sometimes parents request it and it's given.
That's true.
Other times, administrators or teachers, they send work home. There's, whether or not it gets done, it's sometimes yes, sometimes no. That's one moment, it's optional, it's based upon who requests it, or if it is given, and if it is given back. But it's in place.
And I see that as a challenge.
It's in place.
I see that as a challenge, that every time we hit a pothole, a response, not, I won't say that, I'll back up. Many times when we hit a gap in service, a response is just optional, or if someone asks. But at the end of the day, we have fifty-three thousand, you know, suspended, or twenty-six percent not performing. So that's, that's my challenge, and I understand what you're saying, and I think you were gonna, you, Dr. Skraggs, you were gonna make a comment?
No, no, I could make a comment. No, just on the, on the restorative justice.
Okay, I won't, if you didn't, I thought you grabbed your mic.
We have, we, what you're describing is exactly what Schlegel is doing very well. They have a team that's in place, so that when a student is suspended, when they come back, it's almost, I don't know, can we legally say bist if we're not using bist? But it's a bist-type process where they go back through an accountability cycle on their way back through, and that way, it's like, they get back to class, but they're hitting checkpoints before they get there, so that we're triaging with those students right when they come back to us. We're also touching base with the parents. But my point was going to be, all of the high schools have a process that brings them back in a similar way, but we're not all doing restorative justice. I don't know that, I don't think we've had a suspension this year at Sumner, I should probably know that, but the, at the other high schools, I will say that they all go through a similar process where the student comes back and meets with someone who is going to be accountable for them throughout those first few days to make sure that they get back, and is checking in with them frequently. And in situations where it's, you know, a fight, or they have a problem with someone else, they're checking with both of them, and usually there's some type of conflict resolution process that sometimes happens at the front end, right before the suspension, because it's always about education, but also goes to the back end when they come back to us, follow through with those processes. But I sent an email to my colleagues at the high school level to ask what their process is. Like I said, we took all the high school principals over to Schlegel last week to see their intake process, and it's a very good process. They have a lot of good people working in that, so.
So what happens at middle school and elementary?
I think what Dr. Tucker described was, you know, you have schools, some schools who may have, in terms of the reintegration plan, may have, where they spend time in a classroom while they get reintegrated.
Sorry, interrupted you.
No, well, my question is, it's a comment and a question, because I see on your pilot timeline, you have seek board approval on March twenty-nine. I think, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we all know we need this.
Right.
But the question is, the budget, because we missed the deadline before, and we don't want to miss it again, you're asking for March, and I don't even think, we haven't begun to talk about the budget, so I'm just worried, how do we work that out?
Well, my question is, what happened to the resources we allocated?
They were.
The funding that we did was one year, and we would start over for the nineteen-twenty school year, so you would have to approve that.
I'm sorry, that wasn't my question. My question is, what happened to the allocation? So we lost those allocations?
We're not utilizing that money this year.
So did we roll it back into the general fund or something?
Yeah, I can't, that is going to be part of the, what's absorbed because of the cuts in the student audit for this year.
Okay.
Because it was not used.
All right. That could have been part of your presentation, because that's kind of standing out there, that we allocated it, well, we budgeted.
Yeah.
Didn't make the deadline, so the money went where? Got it?
But I was just afraid, we don't want it to happen again, and I don't know how long it's going to take, because we're going to briefly start today.
So, last year, we came before the board with the first MOU with Green Bush around March. And so our plan this year is to come to the board again, but, because it, this, it's not just this program, but it also includes Fairfax, our contract for Fairfax Learning Center High School, and our virtual, Five Hundred Reach Virtual Learning Center. So, around March, it was when we came to the board for the approval for the MOU, and so that's our plan this year, so to include that, include this as part of that MOU that comes before the board.
The process would be that we would cost out, total cost of this program, because those are just preliminary numbers, and bring it back to you during a session. And if we, if you all determine that is what we are going to do, that will become your number-one priority in the budget, and depending on what that cost is, you could probably approve that prior to getting the budget adopted, and we know we have to find those funds to cover that program. So you can approve it prior to approving the whole budget.
Okay, because I was just, when he said we didn't meet it before, you don't want the same thing to happen again.
Right, I think there was, I mean, it was a completely different process last year, I think.
Because if you wait till the budget is adopted, that's not until August, and you're going to miss it again. So you're going to have to make the decision that we are going to do this program and rank it high.
Okay.
For any new or additional funds that we redirect or get from the state.
One last question, where is the one-to-seven ratio? Where is the one to seven ratio in, in this staffing?
So I'm, I'm including the social worker and, and the admin as part of that one to seven ratio.
They're not in the classroom? Administrator is not in the classroom? Or is he or she?
Well, he could potentially be in the classroom as well.
Well, of course, the social worker.
Social worker.
So those classrooms may, okay.
It's not a one to seven instructional ratio.
I'm sorry?
It's not a one to seven instructional ratio, it's one to seven student to adult ratio, because part of the restorative action, part of that program is the restorative action piece, and it's gonna be done by that social worker.
Okay.
So they won't be in the classroom the whole time.
Thanks for the clarification, thank you. Is that all you wanna do with this one? You wanna do with this one? Thank you, sir, and thank you for patience with us drilling down.
Yeah.
Okay? All right.
Thank you.
I'll hand you all some handouts as well with this budget presentation. Anyway, what I'm gonna say is, it's nothing new, but I'm gonna walk you guys through. From talking to Kristen, it's the same process pretty much that we done last year, except it's got some tweaks.
Have we welcomed Dennis on the way to the-
No, we have not. Let us apologize, Mr. Dennis Covington, as well as maybe a little soft to Kelly Tuschman. You feel like been here forever, huh? Not. We officially have welcomed you and look forward to have you join the family.
I'm glad to be here. Got to import some sun, but other than that, I'm okay.
Welcome to winter in Kansas. You will see sun, but you'll see sub-zero weather.
I used to snow that I saw two weeks ago still being on the ground.
Learn how to drive.
Okay, what I'm gonna walk you guys through is, is the budget development process, and I'm not gonna read all the stuff that's on every slide, but I'm walking through it. Like I said, it's pretty much the same process that you went through last year, and it's a process that's used across the country. So I'm gonna try to give you a step-by-step. But the main thing is, the first step of the budget is to determine what the philosophy is of the district, because the budget's gonna establish the pathway to the success and represent your priorities. And my job and the finance team's jobs is to make sure we maximize all the dollars that we get, that the taxpayers allow us to use to, to meet our objectives. So the budget in sequence, in the next couple of slides, you'll see what the sequences are. But the very first one is for us to establish what you all's priorities are. I cannot put the budget together until I know where you all want your money spent, because the budget tells you what is the priority of the district. So until we know exactly where our numbers, where we want to spend dollars, where we want to go with the budget, which to start with, a couple of slides back is your strategic priorities. I looked at those and, and I had a brief conversation with the superintendent. I don't know how we are measuring those to see if we are making those targets or what the targets are. But typically, we would look at those measures to see where we fall short at, to determine where we need to go for the next year. So, and not having that is sort of difficult to move forward, but I'm gonna rely on you guys to come up with where your priorities are, and then we can build accordingly with that. So like I said, the next two slides tells you about what the sequences are. Get your priorities established, establish what the next year's budget priorities are. Review a modified zero-based budget, and I'll tell you what modify mean. Look at some reductions of our existing budget, see where we're not executing the dollars to, to the point where we're getting a good return on our investment. Get our new funding, and from sitting here today, got like six of them already that people have brought up, that you all would have to prioritize. Then we maximize the use of the funds, and then present to you guys a balanced budget. That next slide is just the tentative timeline, and I would tell you that most of the work for the budget is done with the finance department and the existing departments. Where we go through that modified zero-based budgeting, I gave you some handouts that call strategic ROI framing questions for your current budget, and the second page is for your new investments. Those questions on that document really says, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? Does it support a strategic priority? What is the expected outcome of our expenditures of our investment? And for your current investment, is it working? If it's not working, why? Or if we can't get it to work, do we need to quit spending money on it? Those are questions we need to look at when we looking at the current budget. So we would be working with the departments and looking at their major expenditures. And if they can't answer these questions satisfactorily, we probably need to stop doing it, especially if it's not supporting one of your strategic priorities.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when you look at an investment, are you looking at, is the only factor that you really identify as being significant is the ROI?
No, no. There are some things that you must do, even though you don't get a return on investment on it.
Right, okay.
Right, there are some things you must do, because one of the other questions that's down in there is, what's the consequence if we don't do it?
Right.
That, that's part of the evaluation.
Answer.
So like I said, the first step is, is reviewing the board's strategic priorities and getting actuals to target, and so we will work through that, because I need to see where you all are and what those measures are. Like I said, I listed what your priorities were as part of your handout. And then from that, we would establish what our priorities are for the next budget year. Let's say if, if we are falling short in our high expectations for student achievement, we need to say that is priority one, and what are we gonna do to reach that goal? So that would be a high priority item. If I, if safe schools, or like the metal detectors and x-rays are top priority, that'd be up, highly ranked also. So, but we need to set your all's priorities, and then let the staff go back and figure out what we need to do to increase safe and respectful learning environment, if that's priority number one. So you, your priorities set how we come back to you with what we're gonna either redirect or bring to you for new funding. I listed, from years of experience, some of the focus areas that I've walked other boards through far as what the focus areas or priorities are. Safe schools, you wanna look at your social and emotional support that you provide to students, or any of your security measures, like the x-ray machines and metal detectors. Your academic strategies, are we gonna put some programs together that target a certain number of low-performing schools? I've seen that done in some districts. We have subject matter program initiatives where there is like some reading program that's out there that to help increase third-grade reading. There are different types of pro, focus areas and priorities that we need to evaluate based on whatever you all determine are our priorities. Then staff will go out and find things to address those priorities, to see how we can After we do all that, if you go to slide 10, the last thing we need to do is, once we get, I like what the, the, the guy from the state was here, when he said, we can't do everything. That's normally tied to budget. You can't do everything that needs to be done and fixed the district in one year. So once we get all the items together, we're gonna have to prioritize them. And based on years of experience in doing this, that, that's gonna take some time, as to what you all, as a group, determine is the priority of the district. And then to prioritize our, our new requests to make those requirements. I've, I've been in districts where that was a knock-down, drag-out fight between board members. And I've been in districts where they was all on one accord, and that took one meeting. So I'm hoping this worked together, the norms, we can get through that.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Is it also important to, to, he was saying prioritize it, is it also important to identify means of measurement?
Yes.
About identifying whether it's successful or not?
That handout that I gave you, one of the things for a new, new request is, is it, what is the expected outcome, and how would you measure it to make sure you're meeting that objective? Don't start something without knowing how you want it to end.
Right.
So clarify, you're saying you didn't find the matrix for that?
No, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So if someone can give it to me, I, I will gladly read it.
Don't, don't go.
We look forward to establishing that.
Yes, that's step one. All right, the modified zero-based budgeting, let me, you all probably hear people say we're gonna do a zero-based budget. No one does that anymore, because a zero-based budget means I take all your money and you have nothing. Now, for every dollar you need, you need to explain why you need it. That would take us a year. So we go through and we do a modified zero-based budget. That first sheet that I gave you got some numbers on it. I went through and looked at your 17, 18 budget. I picked that one because I need to go back and get the actuals too, so I can finish this analysis. If you look at the top, it says, this is your state and local budget, the non-discretionary money and your discretionary, discretionary money. Those at the top are things that you have very little say-so over. So we would not spend a lot of time at the top of the page, but if you can see, most of your money is at the top of the page. Of the 325,000, 325 million, 262, 262 million of it, 80% of it is non-discretionary. If we got the, if we have the staff, we have to pay them. You have to pay your insurance bills, you have to pay utilities bills, you gotta put gas in the bus. Our debt service, we done the bonds, we gotta pay the debt service bill. So the top part, once we figure out those costs, you can quit talking about them, unless on the staffing piece, you wanna reduce staffing. And I'm sure we don't wanna go that route, because that's riffing. So we, we're not trying to go there. So then you get to the bottom part, which is discretionary. Of our $325 million budget, 62 million of it discretionary. So we'll be walking through the departments, and whatever those dollars are loaded in each department, we will be doing return on investment, what's the consequences if we're not doing it, and determine a pot of money that we can redirect to where when we get to the new money or new programs that we want to institute, like the restorative program for suspended students, we'll have a pot of money there to be able to fund that. And that's why I'm saying, once we get through this process, we will know early on what that program costs, and if you all want to make the decision that we're gonna do that, we'll be able to say we have the money to do that early on. So that's what the modified zero-based budgeting, we with my staff and each department head will walk through those departments. We do that pretty much by, you look at every line in the budget, you look at a three-year analysis, what did you spend three years, three years rolling forward? What's in the adopted budget? And see if those lines are either overfunded, underfunded, or you moved the money to do something else, then we need to permanently move it and fund what you've been spending the money on. That analysis alone will find any, as we say, hitting money in a budget. Then the last piece is to perform the average salary analysis. I know we don't wanna cut positions, but you need to look in the budget and see if you got positions budgeted too high. For instance, just, just a for instance, I don't know what my predecessor's dollar amount was in the budget, but if I look in there and see that, that line is higher than my salary, we need to reduce it. That frees up money. So you need to look at everybody's budget. One to one for your directors, EDs, and cabinet members. And then you, for a category of people, like teachers, you have to do an average salary analysis. Then once you figure that out, you can see if you got your salary line budgeted correctly. But I looked for your 17, 18 budget, at your salaries and benefits, it's about a million dollars over, under budget. No, we left a million dollars on the table, but that could have been due to vacancies. So you just can't say I can cut a million dollars. You have to go in and look at the line to make sure it was not due to vacancies.
Very likely it was, right?
Yeah, more likely it was vacancies. Once we finish that analysis, we will come together as a cabinet and say, we looked through everybody's department, these are dollars we don't think they need. We gonna give them a chance to defend it, but if it makes the list, we're gonna prioritize those reductions and bring them back to the, to the board and say, we're gonna make these cuts. Are you all okay with them? Far as making the cuts, when we evaluate them, we'll make, we'll look at this criteria ranking, what's the impact? Is it no significant impact? That means we gonna take the money. If it's minimal, it's highly likely we would take the money. But if it's a major impact, which goes back to your question, is it something that we still must do? We probably don't wanna take it. And then we'll rank those reductions. Then comes the hard part. Everybody always wants something new and shiny. So every, all the departments, I'm sure, are gonna be like, I need this, I need that, we need to do this. So we gonna gather all that information, make sure we got it, cost it out correctly, and as a cabinet, we will determine what our new priority list is for new funding, and bring that back to you guys to make sure that agrees with whatever you all has as a priority. But we gonna have the reductions and a new list of new stuff to come back and talk to you guys and make sure we as a cabinet and you as a board are all on the same page when we go to present this budget. Case for investment, also in that handout, there's an Excel spreadsheet that everybody that wants something new, will have to fill out this form, which asks the pertinent questions as to why we should be doing it, how much it's gonna cost, what's the expected outcome, how you gonna measure it. If you can't fill out this paper on a new request, you probably don't need to bring it to us, because it's not gonna get funded. And then like I said, we'll prioritize those investments. The next part is trying to see how much money we do have. And based on a good meeting I had yesterday up at the state, I understand we gonna get an increase in funding, somewhere between nine and 10 million dollars. So I'm really, really not concerned about the restorative program, I'm sure we could be able to fund that, but you would have to say that's a high priority, that you gonna say of whatever the new increase is, whatever it is, take it off the top. We can make that decision prior to adopting the budget. As far as your federal monies, you, we have no say-so in that, whatever the state gives us, I only can say that you need to make sure that you're using those dollars effectively. Many districts, especially your Title I dollars, most principals say, I need people. But if people aren't doing the job, there are usually other measures that could better help students than just have an adult in the building, especially if that adult is not a teacher. So we'll be looking at the federal programs to make sure we're maximizing those dollars. We make sure we assign all the expenses to the state to the right categories, because I understand that from my meeting yesterday, there are some dollars that come down specifically for at-risk, transportation, special ed, and ELL, language learners. We make sure we assign all the costs that we can to those programs and make sure we use all the state dollars. We redirect any expense that we can to the federal dollars. We gotta make sure those dollars are used up before we start using our local dollars. Then whatever's left, we either charge it to the state and then charge the local. But if we take that list of new stuff, minus out the, the cuts that we prioritize and say we gonna take these, and we still have a deficit, there's only three ways to fix it. You go back and find more cuts. You go back and find more cuts, lower the amount of new money you need, or going to the last one, which I know we don't wanna do ever, is increase the meal rate. So the top two are the ones we, I'm sure we will have to go back and work through to make sure we can fund whatever your new priorities are. And then come August 20th, sometime in August, we gonna have, well, in July, we gonna have some working sessions with you guys to get all this together because by August 25th, by law, we must have the budget up to the state. And then prior to that, you gotta pub, publish it for, for 10 days before it can even go up there. So sometime late July, early August, y'all must approve what the budget is. And that's the process. It's a lot of work on finance and departments. Your guys is mostly prioritizing.
Well, thank you, Ann. We, let me ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first, I'll open for the other board members because I, I, I deal with school finance, so I, I will ask a ton of questions, but other members, please.
I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate this.
You're welcome.
It was clear, didn't have the pictures. I think we can figure it out, and I, I do appreciate that.
Not to blow your bubble out, but that, that, that school finance issue is, is a dicey thing. And I have that printout that shows we have, if inflation is, the Supreme Court said in essence, you folks in Kansas have the formula right, you just haven't been funding it based on inflation. And the inflation is gonna cost statewide an additional about 95 million bucks on top each year. And there's already pushback to the extent of, of telling Dale Dennis and the state board, they're not even counting it right. And you go, okay, whatever. There's also been a, a comment that the speaker made, that he claims he didn't make, that he wants to cut 200 million out of school funding. And, and you look at him and go, oh yeah, the court's gonna love that. And/or secondly, we reworked the, the formula. Oh yeah, courts will shut the schools down in a flash. But that, it may be my understanding that the estimated with inflation would be, yes, 10 million, but we already got 3 million, so maybe additional 7 million, which is, is, is a, is a, is a lot.
Yes.
But still, it, when we, when we play it out. Secondly, my question, and I guess my comment to us, we won't wait until July to, to start this budget process. And I think you were, somebody said that we took 13 meetings last year. The board didn't take 13 meetings, maybe the staff did, but we will take 2, 4, 6, 8 Saturdays like this because we went to the KSB workshop that said, quote, "We're responsible for every dime in the district." Now, my question to the staff is, is this the same format we're gonna use? We all receive this budget, this is the budget, every penny, we don't know if it added up to 303 million, but every penny. Now, is this the format which has the three-year?
No.
So we're gonna have a different format? Okay, so we need to get that early.
Yes.
So that we can start figuring out how we're going to fit into, I mean, we've gone, this board has gone through a budget process. So we know, one, our responsibility, we know, two, that every department has gone through your modified whatever, and we know what our priorities are, and we know that everything costs. So we'll, so as soon as you can get the format together, we can start looking at that and, and then working this budget. But, but we plan to have these budget workshops on, during daylight, I'll put it like that, during daylight. As, as, what we say in Topeka, nothing good happens after dark.
Sure have done.
And, and that's when nasty legislation is passed. But we don't want that to happen here. And, and last, and, and again, I always say to, to Dr., to Faust and Ms. Tushman and to you and some of our other new staff, I teach history. So there's a phrase, history is prologue. What has happened in the past sometimes causes me, I only speak for myself, to question, 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 question future. So, so, so I deal with school finance, I'm an academic, we still debate if the earth is flat. So please, newer folks, don't, don't, don't get offended if we ask you how you spell budget and looking, looking right at it. So as soon as you can, please get us the format, because you're saying this is not the format that we will work from.
That's the budget that you have to adopt.
Correct, but going through it.
Working sessions, you don't.
Work, okay, but working sessions, if you're gonna use a three-year average, we need to see the three-year average.
Oh, yes, you'll see it.
And, and if, if you're gonna, and we're gonna need to look at each department.
Yes.
So, so it may be this in a, in a spreadsheet format, twice as big, not a problem. We're data people, we got college degrees, and we know how to read.
Right.
One is always one in any system.
And, and we'll have lots of notes on it. So hopefully, when you read them, it, it will answer questions that you don't have to, you know, really think about.
We're looking forward to it.
We'll be done analyzing them.
Other questions, comments? We at the end of this discussion? Well, we cut 30 minutes off of, off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good.
Like, we must be flying east. You pick up time and you fly east. Last one, oh, thank you.
Well, they got their.
See, we didn't chew your head off, did we? I know they told you all kinds of stories.
No.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. So next item is the purchasing proc, procedures manual, please.
I'm, I'm really not sure what the question is on the purchasing manual. We have a purchasing manual.
Board policy says we review it every year. We did not do it in July, therefore, and it says revise August 2017, therefore, it is past due. And I guess what I will ask of the members, if they did or did not have a, a, a chance to review it. We do have some ideas, we've been discussing some ideas, like instead of, in, in, in attempt to be a, I don't know, it's not paperless because that's, that's, that's not the point. But when our folks travel, there's more direct pay that, that, that we'd have to look again at this. I don't believe this board has seen this manual, but certain things with, if, if one pays conferences direct, if one pays registrations direct, then it comes directly in a PO, not as a reimbursement.
Correct.
And that that may be a cleaner way, so that, board members, have you had a chance to review this manual?
I had an opportunity to look at it, but yet and still.
Didn't know what we're doing with it.
Exactly.
Okay.
I had a chance to look at it, but it seemed like it's out of date because it discusses the credit cards had to obtain and things of the nature, and we've, and the decision was made, not decided to pull the credit cards and the process, so it doesn't reflect the updated process that took place based upon the new procedures that were occurring.
Discussed.
Who wrote this?
It's kind of, I'm waiting for the purchasing director to write this. It's a new operation over the years. It's, it's just, you know, when things change, we add to it. And we're in the process of actually rewriting both the procedures manual and the P-card manual to bring them up to date right now.
Okay, so after you revise it, I think it might be best to have him make a presentation so that we can look at certain things?
Yes.
Because I didn't know what I was supposed to be looking at, even though I went through and started reading.
I didn't know what you were looking at. So, yeah, I'm in the process of rewriting and updating it to our current processes.
Can we make suggestions?
Uh huh.
Another week or two.
Okay.
And if there's a certain suggestion that you all want to make sure that we evaluate this in the purchasing manual, please send it to us so we can make sure it's documented.
We may, if, if we, let's go ahead and let you go ahead and make your, your change, proposed changes. That may be the first thing goes to the finance committee, that then we, we review that, take the suggestions from our members and, and, and reply back to you.
Traditionally, travel is not covered in the purchasing procedures manual.
Uh huh.
You can cover it in the purchasing procedures manual.
Why don't you wait till our, our suggestions, because there may be a better way to do it with more than, that was just how I've been doing it at different places. But, but to, what's your timeline of updating?
About two weeks. I'll have it written in two weeks.
Great. Look forward to it. Thank you. But within those two weeks, please, board members, take a time to read, make comments, and can you, do you mind? Do we send them to you or?
To Dennis.
Mr. Coney. And we have to get that email address.
Okay.
But, but please update us, what is, you know, once again, because the board rules the sun and the moon and, and cancels the sun every chance it can, we were, remember, last year, we were accused of going school to school. The board members here, physically, us, picking up credit cards. And I don't know what the, the rest of the story was. Were we shredding them or putting them in our pocket or what? What's the status?
Well, we pulled back in just to have a better idea of the control of it. What we've done is, instead of having at their card on where they could use it at will, we have their request use of the card. So we maintain, custody of the card. They do an online request, they send it in, they also do a requisition at the same time that goes through the approval process. So both things go through an approval process. If we find that there's a justified use for the credit card, then we release the card to the user. They have to come pick it up and check it out for a limited time that they're gonna use the card, then they return. And then if they need it again, if you go through the same process, enter requisition, do an online request, they're gonna get the card and then use it that way. That way, we have a better control before using it as their primary mechanism for purchasing.
Yeah.
And the credit card should not have been, what the credit card should be for is emergency school and things like that.
How many are there out? Still 130, 150 of them out?
I'm sorry.
Still 150 available for, I guess, if they're here in-house, there are people who have access?
Not that many. There, the directors have cards, the superintendent has a card, I guess, most.
Okay, well, you'll provide us that information.
Yeah, I can give you a list of whoever has a card.
But it'll be in, it'll be in updated.
Updated for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We're getting back on, on schedule.
Yeah.
Not really, but kind of. Greg had to leave.
He's on his way.
And he's on his way, yeah. I texted when we were starting the budget, so excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, let's take a break. Till Gregory gets here, Phil can deal with item number nine. Thank you.
Special session. Registration. Mr. Goheen is ready to proceed.
All right. Welcome.
This is a very serious subject. All of our subjects, this. Question. Mrs. Westfall, do we have a copy of the contract?
It's attached.
It's attached?
Yeah, it's, it's in the board docs. You should be able to pull it up.
Yeah, and then there's the amendment. Amendment. If they get approved, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah.
The document are we referring to?
The, the first document, not the amendment, is the one that is the primary contract. It should be an 88-page document when you pull it up.
A 133-2009?
That's correct. And there's actually, there's actually two documents in that attachment, but they're contracts that go together. So the way that, the way it works is those AIA contracts have numbers that go after them, and there's multiple contracts, and you'll see they're, they're, they're paired together. It's just, it's kind of confusing, but that's how the architects do it.
Everyone have the document?
Uh huh.
What's the number on it again? I'm sorry.
It's the first one, A 133.
Okay.
There's several pages that we'll be talking about, but if you want to go to, well, I don't know where you guys want to start in the discussion, but my guess is that you're gonna want to look at page 56.
56.
Maybe is a good, as good a starting point as any.
Read it last night.
It's a long contract, and you've got, the problem with these AIA contracts is you kind of have to read them in conjunction with each other when they do these negotiations and the contractor and, and the school district is identified as the owner in the contract. So anytime you see the word owner, that means the school district. The construction manager at risk or the contractor always refers to J.E. Dunn under these contracts. It's the same in no matter which contract you're looking at. And then there's the architect, and remember, we've got, I think, two architects firms, so it depends on which project. The architect that's responsible for whatever, it depends on which project it is, if that makes sense. And then there's language in their deals with subcontractors as well. Subcontractors depend upon which specific work we're talking about, at which specific project. And there are separate contracts for those subcontractors that will have another AIA number that goes with it. Those are not attached. So that's sort of generally how the process works.
Go ahead and discuss. We'll be all over it.
If you guys go to, and as I understood it, the, the issues or the concerns preliminarily that, that the board wanted some discussion on related to obligations or responsibilities for inspections of the projects and as we reached completion on different projects, who was responsible for those inspections as well as warranty work on the projects. That's what I generally understood to be looking at. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna point you to a couple of places where there are those provisions and kind of give you some general understanding of what those obligations are and then answer questions. I think that's probably the best way to go to make sure I'm giving you guys the right information that you want.
You did say 56.
I did say 56.
Get zero, I don't have that.
Uh, it should go to 88, so.
Ask Dr. Page 40.
So are you looking, well.
Is that before or after?
So, so there's a, there's, there's a section that's 3.3 that says supervision and construction procedures.
56.
On mine, it's page 56, so.
Now, at the bottom, what page number is it?
14.
Okay, thank you.
I don't even see a page number at the bottom, but okay.
It's in the far right corner.
This is the second document, page 14.
Second document.
Wasn't that the first one?
It's 14. First.
Two documents.
Oh, no, they had me on the first one.
I don't know. Somebody should be able to.
John?
I think so. I think so. Give us, give us just a second. We're technologically challenged, or I am, rather. How about, how about that? That's, that's not my forte.
It's the really big.
A 133.
There you go.
Right, right.
We're getting it, we're getting it, just a second.
The number at the top is what?
Okay, you just got a blank here, but.
Yeah, she, she.
3, 1, 2, 3.1.
Yeah, the one I want you to look at is, at the top of the page, it says section 3.1.2, but I want to look at the lower on the page where it starts and says 3.3.
Page 14 of the second document.
Correct.
I thought you said it was the first one.
Well, it's all, it's, it's contained in one document.
There's two documents in one.
It's the bottom. Contact.
Right.
Keep going, Josh.
I'm lost, so.
Page 14. Can you see?
Okay, but I'm, I was on the, I thought they said the first one, 56.
It is.
It is. It is. The second one's the amendment. I'm not.
If you got the PDF file open, it's page 56.
Right.
That's the little top there.
Well, I never got it.
Right.
I never made it to 56.
She's in Safari.
I'm not sure what's.
It's page 14 of the second document.
Can you guys read the screen? Probably not.
It's okay.
I mean, the thing is.
Section 3.3 is the one I want you to look at.
Right, so the thing is, I don't know if I'm in front of it, if it's a different.
Wait, slow down.
Are you able to get there?
Number 3.2.
I think 3.1. It's page 14.
Yeah, right there.
It stopped at 44, I couldn't get it.
Yep, right there it is.
Okay. Some of us found it.
Ah, this one says supervision and construction. I think it's further down. So let me, let me tell you, the. So, let me, let me tell you, the, the contracts have got different obligations throughout them for the construction manager, different obligations for the architect, different obligations for the owner, as it relates to these projects. And this is separate, apart from whatever inspections that the city or some other municipal entity might do, as, as it relates to any construction that's done on site. Under the contract, the contractor, which is J.E. Dunn, they're the construction manager at risk, they're the contractor under this contract, is required to supervise and direct the work, using the contractor's best skill and attention. So that's, that sort of lays the groundwork. They're in charge of supervising all the subcontractors on the work site. They're also responsible for controlling the construction means, the methods, the techniques, the procedures, all of that piece of the work, materials. They're responsible for making sure the materials meet, meet the sufficient requirements, that there aren't defects in the materials, things of that nature as well. Under section 3.1, and, and there's some shared obligation with the architect, depending upon what the design capacity of the different structures are. So J.E. Dunn, or the contractor's not responsible for the design work, that's all the responsibility of the architect. So for example, if you had an electrical issue, and that was designed improperly, then that could be potentially the responsibility of the architect as opposed to Dunn. But, once it's designed correctly, and there's engineers that can come into play too, for particular projects or pieces of it, then the implementation of that design is a responsibility of the contractor. So doing the work correctly, picking the right materials, making sure the materials are not defective, that's a responsibility of the contractor. That make sense for everybody? So, if you look at section 3.3.2, it says the contractor shall be responsible to the owner for acts and omissions of the contractor's employees, subcontractors, their agents and employees, and other persons or entities performing portions of the work. So, to the extent there is a subcontractor that performs work on the job site, and does so in a deficient manner or negligent manner, the responsibility is J.E. Dunn's as the contractor. Okay? So, ultimately, what would happen is J.E. Dunn will look at the subcontractor if there's a problem on the project, but we don't have to worry about going after the subcontractor. That's Dunn's responsibility. We would just look to J.E. Dunn and say, "Look, you're responsible for this subcontractor and the work they're performing under it. Fix it. Make sure it's right." The top of the next page, the section 3.3.3, says the contractor shall be responsible for the inspection of portions of the work already performed, to determine that such portions are in proper condition to receive subsequent work. So that's the first provision in the contract, and there's several others that put the onus on J.E. Dunn or the contractor, to make sure that the work is performed correctly and inspected before it's signed off on. So, that's contractor's responsibility, not our responsibility as the owner. It's not our job to go back through and make sure that the work's being done correct. That's the responsibility of the contractor, and that's why we hired them, serve as a general contractor. Next section talks about labor and materials, which is not super critical to what we have going on. There is a final completion section much further down in the contract, and it's in section 9.10, if you're interested in it, that talks about the architects being responsible for the final inspection before their sign-off and final payment issued on a project. So, you, you've got sort of a double protection for the school district, in that not only is the contractor supposed to sign off before there's a final payment, but also the architect's supposed to sign off and do that.
Greg, who, who selects our architects? Are they our employees, or?
No, they're, they are, we have a separate contract. It's not attached here, but it's part of the total package. The board did an RFP, and selected two architectural firms to do the work on the bond projects. I don't know which architect firm is doing which project. You'd have to talk to one of the managers of the projects to make sure we understand what that is, but depending on which project site it is, which school building, basically, there would be an architectural firm that would be responsible for that. And we have a separate contract with those firms, that are on the same AIA forms. So that's only really at this substantial completion phase, when they're looking at getting final payment, that the architect signs off on the inspections. There's a provision in the contract that talks about making sure that there's compliance with all statutes and regulations in terms of the construction process. That, again, is the contractor's responsibility, not the owner's responsibility. We have the responsibility to make sure that, no, you're fine, just make sure you're all right. To make sure that we have cooperation, that zoning issues, things like that are complied with, that's not their responsibility. But their responsibility is to make sure that work site safety, there's a provision about that in here, complying with any electrical codes, building codes, things of that nature. That, again, is the contractor's responsibility, to make sure that's complied with. Again, unless it's the design phase, if it's the design phase, then that falls on the architects. So if, if your architects or engineers designed the facility, or designed a system incorrectly, that's not the contractor's fault, that's the, the architect's or the engineer's responsibility. And then there's a warranty section in here, I believe is in 12, section 12 or 11. Well, there's a warranty section right here at 3.5, right where we're at, that the contractor warrants the architect and the owner, that materials and equipment furnished under the contract will be of good quality and new unless the contract documents require. Otherwise, they never do. We require them to be new equipment, new things installed. So there's a warranty piece there, but there's also a warranty piece for work, for correction of work after substantial completion in section 12, that, again, would require the contractor and the sub to make sure that any problems that are discovered within it, I think it's a one-year warranty from the, the time the work's completed, to make sure that is inspected and done correctly. There's a separate claims provision, if we have issues that we're concerned about. The final completion, the architect's, does require an onsite, onsite visit to make sure that's done correctly. And then in, section 5, what's, section 5. I'm just trying to give you guys highlights of where these provisions are, and then I can kind of give you a general overview of what we have going on. Subcontractual relations are at section 5.3. That talks about who, again, the contractor being legally required, legally obligated to the school district as the owner, for the work that the subcontractors are performing, and talks about how that piece goes together. We do have the right, as the owner, if there is subpar work, to correct the work and seek an offset or costs associated with that. But frankly, the better course, if you are aware of subpar work, is to ask Dunn to fix it, or have it fixed, rather than have us do it, and seek compensation for it, because, frankly, we don't want the liability or the exposure if we're correcting work. We prefer to have that on the contractors. In other words, they've agreed to indemnify us, they're covering us under their insurance. And so if the work in any project is determined to be subpar, or not done correctly, we don't want to fix it for them unless we absolutely have to. We want to force them to come out and fix and correct it, which they're required to do under the contract, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of the, the general course for how this, this process works. I'm trying to see if there's anything else that we've got in here. There's some other provisions that could come into play. If there's an injury, or if there is damage to property as a result of any sort of defective work, then again, that's, they're required to indemnify us for that, under their insurance policies, or directly, however they see fit to do so. Obviously, they would go after the subcontractor themselves. We shouldn't have to do that or bear that burden. And as it relates to inspections, if we have a subcontractor that we have information is, is Dunn's subpar work because of an incident, or because of a situation along those lines, I think we're well within our rights under the contract to ask Dunn, as the general contractor, to go back and inspect all of the work that that subcontractor has done under the terms of the contract, on all of the projects that they've done work on, and ask them to re-inspect that work at their cost. I think that, that is certainly something we're entitled to do, and if there's deficiencies found, to correct that work. So, that's kind of the, the framework under which the contract operates, and how the different obligations are supposed to fit into the equation. And maybe that's a good point to sort of ask for questions from you guys, to make sure I understand what.
Into the weeds of the specific, obviously, three, four-month situation.
Right.
So, if I hear you correctly, we did not, they did not properly inspect.
Somebody did not, because we found a problem.
Correct.
So.
And we don't know who the somebody is? We don't know who's responsible.
Correct. I don't know who the somebody is. We know who's responsible, and that is, the obligation to do the inspection is, is the contractor's, which is J.E. Dunn's.
Okay.
And so, because of that, our position should be, and I think is, that the work that was performed by that subcontractor, I think we should ask Dunn to go back and re-inspect the work that was done on all the projects by that subcontractor. That's what I think you guys should do.
And that needs to be itemized for our information.
Yes, I think so.
That wall or that wall. When you say by project, warranty work on project, is that the total?
So, well, so, it, it, it is the total project, because J.E. Dunn's on the, on the, they're, they're the contractor for the entire project, the way you guys have got it set up. But, what I'm referring to specifically is any work performed by that subcontractor, regardless of on which bid package or which project it was. So, if the, if that subcontractor was working on school A, and did work, and I think we are, I think it's appropriate for us to say, because we know there was a problem on school B, we want you to go back and make sure that there wasn't a problem in school A, with the work that was performed there.
And that's J.E. Dunn's responsibility?
Yes.
Why are we even concerned? I mean, if it, if it's J.E. Dunn's responsibility, why are we concerned about the work, the contractor performing subpar work?
Because we don't want somebody to get injured as a result of the subpar work.
Okay.
That's why.
And you don't want to deal with the long-term.
And the long-term, as, as was suggested in the background, and we also don't want to, we got a warranty period here, right? And so, what we don't want to have is, we don't want to essentially bottle lemon.
Right.
We, we're aware there's a problem. We want to make sure there's not a problem with the other, elsewhere. That's exactly right.
They did it here.
And, and, and get it corrected now, while it's under warranty, as opposed to us having to deal with a long-term maintenance issue down, down the line. Because what'll happen is, two years, three years from now, if there's, there ends up being a problem, then we'll be out of warranty, and then it's going to be, it's going to require a bunch of extra work to try to get that fixed, or we're just going to have to do it ourselves. So, what we need to do right now, in my opinion, is, okay, we know there was some subpar work done by the subcontractor on one project, or perhaps a couple of different projects, as I understand, is that correct? Yeah, I see the nod, yes. So.
Two, three, one, five, what? Have to go back and look and see.
You know, honestly, as far as subpar work, yeah, that, the particular subcontractor, that's the subject of our conversations, worked in a number, and I don't know the specific.
That number, okay, you have to get that number, and, and identify them for purposes of.
Yeah. And, and, and that's only what we've identified, right?
You had that conversation with J.E. Dunn, and you need to go back and make sure everything is. Go ahead.
Right, because what, what we're aware of is stuff that we have identified since the work was performed. And so, what we want to make sure of is, okay, we know this, this contractor did subpar work on those projects. Those have been corrected, as I understand it, but what else might be there? Because this, this subcontractor's done work on multiple projects. And so, I don't think that should be our responsibility. In fact, I don't really want it to be our responsibility for us to go out and figure that out. It's not.
So let's not.
Right. So I think the, I think the thing should be an ask to Dunn to say, "Hey."
That's right.
"We've got concerns, we want you to go out and re-inspect this stuff, we think it should be on your dime, and we want to report that it's good to go."
Not we think you should, according to the contract, it is your dime.
That's a better way to phrase it.
I would also want to ask that whoever signed off, especially on that one job, that anything that they signed off on be re-inspected.
That's fair. I think that's smart. Yeah.
That's a good point.
And not have them go back and do it.
Yeah.
That's a very, that was a very grievous error.
I, I don't disagree with that.
And it wasn't something that just. Yeah, like a block boss. Yeah, but I would say that the person that signed off on his subpar work, anything else they signed off on, should be inspected, inspected with J.E. Dunn bearing the cost.
Yeah.
Here's my question.
Let me ask you this.
Go ahead.
Don't the, doesn't the city do an inspection, final inspection?
No.
They're supposed to.
That's it.
And I don't, I don't know what to say on that, other than, obviously, it would appear that the city missed an issue as well. But we don't have a specific contract with the city, so.
You didn't have a communication?
Certainly, certainly. And, and frankly, you know, I, I don't know what happened on this particular situation. On the one, on the one that we all are aware of, I, I understand, I don't know what happened, because obviously, that should have got caught at the city inspection level, too. Some of the others, I think, were more subtle, as I understand it. There was still work that was not up to par, but it was not stuff that maybe.
Safety issue, maybe.
Well, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to overspeak, because I don't know, but the bottom line is, yes, there should have been a city inspection, too. That city inspection should have been signed off, obviously, that, something got missed there, too.
Can we be reimbursed for what we paid back? Get our people to do, to go back and correct those problems?
So, as I, as I understand it, when we're finding or identifying the problems, and I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Carell, but what I understand is that, when we've identified the problems, that Dunn or the subcontractor have gone back and fixed or repaired those problems, correct? And, and they would be obligated to do that under the terms of the contract. What the missing piece, to me, is right now, is it shouldn't be us finding out about those problems. That should be on Dunn to go back, at this point, because we've identified enough of saying, "Okay, it's fine for us to, to," and this is the way warranty works, anyway. I, I would do a walkthrough, I missed something, and then a, a month later, I identify, this outlet's not working, right? And so I call J.E. Dunn, they come out and look, and say, "Okay, this one wasn't connected right." They fix it and move on. So those are kind of things you might be finding out as you're going along. But because we've identified a, a certain number here, it seems to me that this shouldn't be on us to just randomly find these things. This should be, no, you need to go back out and make sure that all the work was done correctly.
The contract says, they're inspecting it, so what's, this should, and this, this, this loose oversight and implementation of this contract is, is bothersome. I mean, here we are.
Right.
And, and that's not the interpretation you gave us before. The interpretation you gave us before is that our electricians went out and, and corrected it. Now, was that the wrong incorrect?
Yeah, no, they, they did not go out and correct anything. They were out there at my request, go look to see why there were certain things that weren't working, and so I asked them to go out there and help.
They fixed it.
Just to go look.
No, you didn't tell us to go look, and we can always, can't play a backup.
Okay. Okay, well, I misunderstood.
But I understand that, and.
But they just left.
When I then, when the, when the heater didn't work.
And nobody did anything to it?
Who repaired the heater?
Well, in this case, it was J.E. Well, in this case, it was J. Dunn that.
Oh, J. Dunn repaired the heater?
Well, that's a little different than what he said.
I'll make sure.
Then none of our carpenters, electricians did any, anything?
Well, I'm not going to say that, no. They would go out and do work that if it was normal maintenance things. That's where sometimes there's a little bit of a gray line when there's work going on in the building. Now, we have a situation at the same location.
I'm sorry. I'm just reinterpreting what you shared with us. And if I misinterpreted, I apologize. But I was pretty clear with you suggesting that when there was a problem that we've maybe indicated when the heater didn't work, our people went out to check it and repaired it. That was my interpretation you said, telling us. And we must have been mishearing.
Yeah, I missed it, too.
What I, what I, what I.
Okay, we must have misheard.
Yeah, what I understood, and maybe I've misunderstood as well, is they went out to check it.
Right.
Well, I got the check.
We got the check, but I thought he said they had to fix it. They couldn't leave it the way it was. Okay, well, then I missed, I missed out. Yeah, definitely. That's why I kept saying, are they going to repair us for the people doing that?
I mean, I looked for it, said they corrected.
No, by the way, and then again, under the contract, if we perform work to do corrections, we are entitled to a credit for that under the contract. But I don't think you should do that, because then you're taking on the liability for the repair. And I would rather have Dunn or the subcontractor do that work so that they're still obligated under the contract.
No, I got that, but I could have sworn he said.
Yeah, because that's like we took the bond that they put up.
I thought you said you did the work. They corrected it, because you had to do something at that time. Because the heaters, something wasn't working, so they had to do something. So I miscued that, not a problem. You saying that they're going to fix it and go on?
Right.
Because my question is, if they weren't going to find out what was going on, and why did they, and help me understand, did they attempt to remove the cover of the electrical box and boom, or what?
It was the electrical panel and one of the electrical modules.
Mm-hmm. So you, so help me understand again. You're saying, when you found that to be the case, you called J. Dunn, and they came out and repaired it?
Yes. Well, when the, when the incident happened, that's when I had to ask our fellow to go. So if we weren't having any success finding this, there's an issue with the heaters and the stairwells not working. So what's, maybe we have a problem with our heater. Go find out what's going on. And that's when I instituted, that's when I called after that happened.
Yeah.
I called the contractor, said, we got a problem here. We'd rather get that taken care of.
We'll ask for clarity more, so we won't have this conversation, this type of misunderstanding. Go ahead.
So that's essentially where we're at with that particular issue right now, as far as I know. Now, again, if there's additional questions.
Was that a legal document? Is that, what do you, what, how do you proceed? How do we proceed?
Well, I think we proceed by sending something in writing or asking Dunn in writing to re-inspect the work that this subcontractor did on any project.
They worked on that?
I don't think so, unless you guys don't want to, I mean, that's my recommendation as to what you do. I think you, I think.
Not just that project, any project they've worked on.
That's what I think. And I think that's, I think your administration's fully capable of doing that without board direction, but I would trust that that's what the board wants to do, and we can.
That's why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. So I think it's pretty clear what administration's supposed to do.
What's the value of this contract, 15 million?
I don't know the total. I think it might be.
What's the amount?
The subcontract?
No, J. Dunn.
Oh, it's more than that, isn't it?
Please find out next time.
Yeah, I'll find out the total dollar.
Well, I think it's in here.
It's in here.
Yeah, it's in here. I just don't know it off the top of my head.
Because then there was a little additional duties when we added six classrooms and all that. That cost went up, so.
Yeah. Now, this should not cost anything. This should not be any add-on.
You'll make that clear in our communication.
Yes. This should be part of the warranty work, part of the inspection obligation, and frankly, making it clear, we expect going forward to not have these inspection issues.
So you don't need a motion from us to do it? Just do it as part of the regular obligations?
I don't think this requires a board action at this moment.
Do they have a timeline to correct?
Whatever's reasonable. I mean, particularly if we've got people.
You know, they're not being reasonable with us at these, at these millions of people. So this, this lack of urgency is concerning to me, because we're toward the end of this bond. We're over, what, 60% of, almost?
Roughly that.
Yeah. So the first 60%, I mean, we're over half. So what has happened in the first 60%?
I, yeah, I just don't know what's, I don't know what's realistic.
That's sort of a question.
Yeah, I don't know what's realistic in terms of manpower to get them out there and to do it. That's the only thing I know.
Well, this is J. Dunn. Come on.
I know, but I'm not a, I'm not an electric person, so I don't, I don't know what it takes.
This is J. Dunn. Exactly.
Yeah, I'm not saying they.
So without, without any clear direction and urgency, we could have electrocuted our people.
I understand. And I think they should do it right away. I'm not saying that. I just, I don't know what the timeline should be or not be. That's not.
Your other contracts, and this is not the first time you've had this type of response of a contractor.
No, I'm not.
I mean, there's other people in your firm could.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
So maybe consult with them if you don't know.
Yeah. And in fairness, and I told Dr. Faustus before we got going, the attorney, and I spoke with him briefly when I was at the meeting, the attorney who actually negotiated the contract, he pointed out the provisions to me so I could share them with you. He's got more experience with the actual construction contracts than I do. I just don't know enough about the trades, is to know if the electrical work is, like, throughout a bunch of different buildings, how long that's going to take somebody to go out and work.
I'll tell you what, I bet they draw down every month.
I, I don't disagree with that.
It's automatic withdrawal.
I would not be surprised.
So they waste no time getting our money. That's the.
Correct, correct, correct.
You don't have to agree with that. We see it, the invoice.
Yeah.
So can I reiterate what you're doing? What's going to be in the letter is ask them to re-inspect all the work that this contract, subcontractor has done, and the work that the supervisor who signed off, this subpar work has done.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
That's one ask. Isn't there a second ask? Is there, I understand there's a second ask?
What's the second ask?
To inspect all the work? How do we know all the work hasn't been shot?
This is the only one we're seeing having any evidence of.
Yeah, this is the only one we electrocuted people.
Right. So possibly the second ask is, it's the inspection of that subcontractor specifically, and then this one we'd ask for the people that were signing off on that.
All right, that's the first ask. But what about their general responsibility? Do we know that has been, they've signed off on everything? Obviously.
The subs aren't supposed to get paid if there's not been a sign off.
How about J. Dunn? You have, they have, they have satisfied all other less-than-excellent work?
I can't say that I specifically said, go inspect every pit of them. I mean, that's frankly.
Well, let's say the ones that you've found less than.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah. They, we go through, there's a punch list.
Right.
Like, many of these projects, we have been going through that, frankly, the projects that were inspected through the summer, which were working on some of those things. But they're not doing it to our satisfaction, and so we're not going to close out that project until they reach a certain point.
Okay, so, so does that constitute a second ask to note up those ones that you're still waiting for them to, am I hearing you correctly? There's still some that haven't completed, or they have completed?
There are still some. We're whittling that down to just very, very few items, right?
So is it proper to include those in this letter?
They can do that. They've got all the information that they've been providing to me, telling me where you're at with this and this and this, you know, so they can.
The answer's yes.
So to reiterate, we're still concerned about this list, but super serious concern about that first ask.
Correct.
Greg, are you writing this letter?
I'll work with Wayne to put the letter together.
Okay. Make sure we got the right legal terms.
I will do the best I can. Actually, Joe at my office will probably be the one writing the letter, in fairness.
Can I ask to see it before it's finalized?
You can absolutely ask to see it.
Thank you.
You can, you can, you can have part in the drafting of it, if you want.
That'll work.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I'll copy it. I'll put it up on the.
Check with your firm, there should be some, should be some time, because if you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, and again, I, obviously, I'm having hearing problems and comprehension problems. They are still working on some projects. From when?
From the projects that would have been, should have been completed before the start of school, there's some of these.
Of some from the summer.
So they're, they're a six-month delay for some corrective action?
And some of the, and some of this, just again, to reiterate, under the contract, you've got a one-year period to identify problems and get them corrected. That's why that the clock starts when they, when got sort of that substantial completion, then, and there's supposed to have been inspections before that substantial completion, but if you identify problems after that, that's when they got to come in and fix them. So that's why it's so important to get them identified.
If I, again, for me, if we finish our projects August 2019, we have a year? Or if the project was finished in August 2018, we have to August 2019?
Correct.
It's typically, you have a year for once you sign off on the COO.
Right.
Certificate of Octancy. Once we sign off on that, you have a year to find any problems, and then they have to correct them.
Correct.
So.
We're six months into some of those projects.
That's right.
Problems, excuse me.
Now, if we've identified it, but it's not fixed yet, they still have the obligation to fix it.
Right.
Right. You just have to identify within a year.
Yes.
Right. That's right.
And we hope you identified everything.
Right. Oh, it's tricky.
Yeah, especially 15 million plus taxpayers.
I agree.
Last comments. Dr. Faust, closing comments. Welcome, first board meeting.
I just have one quick. Are you concerned about the integrity of the work they're doing on any other projects?
Anything that we have an instance about, you know, that's, again, that's kind of a tricky question. Yeah, there's things I see as, this is not, this is, some of it's pretty minute little details, you know? And I'm looking at some of the, frankly, some of the rubber stops around the glass in the new classrooms at Harman wasn't installed correctly. I said, you got to fix that. I don't want that. They're missing caulk joints and this sort of thing. So the level of what happens where it involves our electricians? No, not really. I mean, that was a very major surprise. There's always little items when these big, major projects, the little details that you have to look at very closely and make sure they get all those things listed, you know? I'm not worried that we're not getting a good product. You know, the former assistant director that was day-to-day on the ground, he was watching these projects like a hawk. Since he's been gone, I've been spending my time. I've got the other assistant director going out there, and frankly, I rely on our experts in our shop, our foreman, to go out, and I'll say, go take a look and make sure, see what you think about this conduit that's been put up. And they have pointed out numerous.
How'd they miss that, though? I don't mean no harm.
I'll answer that.
Yeah, but how'd they miss it?
And it's obvious. J. Dunn is not doing their punch list.
Everybody's watching like a hawk, but that one passed fly. Okay.
Giant. So not that they don't have the capacity.
Yeah, I'm not saying they don't have capacity. I assume they do.
Um, you got a, we've got a list of upcoming events all the way to summertime. But that, while it's not on the agenda, and I'm going to, I'm not, it's not an official item, but it is a, a, an item. If we remember, and Jen Holt is here for some feedback, when, when we left the negotiation table, there was a suggestion to have some conversations on comparable salaries.
Right.
And I, that's all I can, how I can phrase it.
I think it was referred to as the compensation, compensation committee, right?
So we need to have some people volunteer and some times to set those meetings.
Right. And I, and I think, yeah. I think.
Kelly's currently working on that right now, pulling that data.
But if you want board members to participate in that, then you need to identify people who can participate.
Well, let's throw out board members who are willing to either or and serve on that conversation committee and are looking farther ahead to when we start negotiations. Because letters, notice go up February 1?
I think it's technically due March 1, but we tried to do it February 1 so that we get a jumpstart on the negotiations, and that's what we talked about with the union, so.
So we're, we're, we're there. So anyone volunteering? And we're looking to have the conversation in the legislature. I won't get back Kansas City before 6 o'clock. It kind of violates my thing. Nothing good happens at after dark, but nevertheless, there's always Saturdays after 9:00.
So are you asking people to sit on negotiation?
A combination. At this point, just who's, who's willing to have these conversations? Will all, everyone raise their hand at once?
I'm willing.
And I'm willing.
We did it last year. You would think we'd switch up. I know everybody's doing something, but.
Share the insight, but we'll go from there, and we'll. And.
I agree. I think rather than looking back, we need to move forward. And knowing board members, you really need to be a part of that to understand.
It gives you a lot of insight.
I was silent because I was waiting to see if someone would volunteer. But if you don't want it, okay, I'll do it. You have to learn. You have to learn.
Okay, we'll get, Jen, we'll get back to you via Greg, via Dr. Faust, and without any objection, any other questions, comments? Meeting adjourned.